Okay, welcome everyone back to the open portion of the Committee of the Whole for September 29th, 2020. And thank you Mayor Elliott for taking care of the accounting for me. It's hard for me to do that and everything else. And so we, I am councillor Chris Pedengill, chairing the Committee of the Whole today. We have a slightly amended agenda. I'm going to say our welcome again. So I'd like to welcome everyone to the Squamish Nation and Zeta Territory. Howam squalam kwis taliknamaslas Squamish mwayway. And we, tomorrow is Orange Shirt Day, but our council meeting is today. And so to help recognize that, we have a short video just to explain what Orange Shirt Day is all about. Just ask that everyone make sure you are muted and we are going to try and play a little video and see how that works. And Tori, if I can turn it over to you.
I'm having to keep it on mute. It's already muted, isn't it? Tori needed it unmuted.
Hello, everyone. My name is Phyllis Webster. I am Sherwem from the Strachem, Kenno Creek, Hatltem, Dog Creek First Nation, which is about one and a half hours southwest from Williams Lake, B.C. I grew up with my granny on the Dog Creek Reserve until I was 10, then moved with my auntie after she finished university. When I had just turned six, I was sent to the St. Joseph Indian Residential School near Williams Lake, a place we called The Mission. My granny bought me a shiny new orange shirt to go to school in. When I got there, I was stripped, my clothing taken away, including my new orange shirt, and I never saw it again. I was no longer excited to be going to school. I wanted to go home to granny. I had to stay there for 300 sleeps. No matter how much all of us little kids cried, it didn't matter. No one listened to us. Our feelings didn't matter. We didn't matter. I am the third generation that attended residential school. Both my grandmother and mother attended The Mission for 10 years each. Today is a day to honor and remember residential school survivors and their families. Every child matters, even if you're an adult. We must also remember those children that never made it and are no longer with us. Today is a day for survivors to tell their stories and for us to listen with open hearts. I am humbled and honored that you are all taking part in Orange Shirt Day. When I was in school, I didn't know my own history. So I am overjoyed that you are taking part and learning the true history of Canada's first peoples. Gokshjem, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Just add briefly, it's one of the things that I really, really happy to have as a councillor is seeing how seriously and how hard our whole staff and district takes reconciliation. So really proud to see what we are doing. There's a whole lot of work to do, but from engineering and the eagle viewing dyke and the work that's being done on this is, it makes me feel really quite proud to be part of this municipality. And this is an important day and important things to think about. And thank you for everyone at the district that worked so hard on this. I will move on now to the community grant policy if Ms. Dicker is with us.
Yes, I'm happy to join today, council. I'm just waiting to be passed the permission to share my screen. Okay, good afternoon, Mayor and council. My name is Sarah Dicker and I am the manager of arts and culture for the District of Squamish. I'm joined today by Natasha Goldbeck, the general manager of community services. And we're here today to present the community grant policy update for council's review and feedback prior to approval. So the objective of today is to seek council's feedback prior to seeking approval of the policy. And I'm going to cover the background of the project, a summary of council's feedback from the previous meeting, the new process for grants moving forward, and a summary of the 2020 funding, a proposed future state for the funding of the program, the benefit of the new process, as well as a recommendation to council. So the background of this policy change was established on December 10th, 2019, when council directed staff to bring back an alternative to the granting process. Council's suggestions there were to establish a partnership with a not-for-profit to manage the process and to investigate and to allocate a fair budget amount in the future, as well as to review the delegation by law to allow staff the ability to waive fees for not-for-profit organizations. Since then, staff have worked on the draft of a new policy, which was presented to council on July 14th, 2020, of which council provided feedback, which will go through now. So council's feedback included the alignment of the community grant policy with the official community plan. And that was a change from what was presented originally from staff, which was alignment with council's strategic plan, and the eligibility of health, poverty, and social services initiatives, which also falls under the alignment with the grant policy with the OCP. Preference to see all events considered together in the grant program, which is different to what was presented initially, which included a separation of downtown events from other events, and also clarity on in-kind grants process. So new since July is the alignment of the policy with the OCP goals. And in-kind funds are now included in the overall granting streams through the Squamish Arts Council and the Community Foundation. And that includes space rental, traffic management, tipping fee, as well as tipping fees. And so there has been an increase in the value of the grant programs for both the Squamish Arts Council and the Community Foundation in relation to that change. Downtown events funding has been paused due to COVID-19 restrictions and will be reviewed later in the year following the, the, sorry, following the year end and a review of the events that have happened in the downtown in 2020. Conversation is ongoing regarding funding for trails and building maintenance. And the youth granting scheme will be established by early 2021. And that will be a new granting scheme that will be coming forward. So for the purposes of this policy, we're focusing on the new granting streams that will be run by the Squamish Arts Council and the Community Foundation. And this was based, staff's work was based on the breakdown of funding awarded in 2020, which included what's on your screen there. And so moving forward, we initially proposed funding amounts on July 14th. And you'll see the new proposed state reflected in the beige column in front of council. And that is including the, the non-applicable rows being rolled into the amounts in the Squamish Arts Council and Community Foundation grant programs. So you'll notice that there is a disparity between the total for the proposal on July 14th and the new proposed date. And that is taken into account that we haven't determined yet a way forward for the trails maintenance, as well as the downtown community events traditionally run by the BIA. And so those, those matters are ongoing. But for the benefit of the community, the policy is more related to the two streams being run by the Arts Council and the Community Foundation. And so that is why staff are proposing to move forward with the policy in order to establish those two main granting schemes for 2021. And the benefit of the new process includes administrative efficiency for staff and public, the move of the grant policy externally to the district, freeing up council to work towards other goals on behalf of the community, and keeping council's role high level, as well as the empowerment of community groups and the creation of connections between community groups and establishing grant programs run for the community by the community. And then it also enables groups to leverage funding received by council if they so desire. So the recommendation today is that council rescind the community grant policy dated September 20th, 2016, and that council move forward with the approval of the updated community grant policy at a special business meeting held on October 6th, 2020. Thank you for your time, council, and I welcome any questions you may have.
Okay, council? Okay, I'm not seeing, oh, councillor Anderson.
Yes, staff have referred to the downtown events, and I quote, run by BIA. But of course, we have probably half a dozen downtown events. So just to clarify that, that category of events, we have probably four different organizations involved, from Squamish Days to the Arts Council, just for the purposes of the public hearing. I take it that all are in the same category of consideration in the future.
Ms. Dicker?
Thank you councillor Pedengill through the chair. Councillor Anderson, traditionally the funding that has been granted to the Downtown Business Association has been for four main events in the downtown area, which include Canada Day, the Santa Claus Parade, the pumpkin patch in the park, and the last one is escaping me right now, but traditionally events associated with the Downtown Business Improvement Association. I believe that financial services are coming forward with a report on the use of the funds in 2020, or the non-use of the funds in 2020 for other events. But specifically in this report, we had separated those funds as they are traditionally have been funded by council, unlike other events that councillor Anderson had mentioned in the past. And so that's why that category was established.
Sorry, councillor Anderson, did you have a follow-up?
Just to clarify, the Squamish Days and the Wind Festival would be traditionally run by other organizations. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Race?
Yeah, thank you. Just in thinking about this, it seems to me that we almost just have a separate category for these events. And not just any event, but very specific events. And a couple of them have been listed, and I wasn't meaning to decide that all today. But historically, in the granting process, council has usually been reluctant to fund events as opposed to something like a society or ongoing work of a society. And so I think we'd have to get our heads around what types of events we are prepared to fund and how we would fund it. Because there's a whole bunch of them out there. And every year, we used to get applications from different events. And very often, we would focus just on the two or three that were mentioned and not others. So I think it's, to me, it's a separate discussion point. When I was thinking about this agenda item today, I kind of put it into a separate category in my mind to deal with it separate from this policy.
Okay, I'll weigh in, not seeing any other hands at the moment. I tend to have the same concern for me, and actually I have a question as well. Which maybe I'll start with, the Wind Festival. Is that, is there an expectation that the Arts Council, that they would manage that as part of the money as we see here? Or would that be part of the downtown events piece? Or where would that fall right now?
Thank you councillor Pedengill for your question. Traditionally, the Arts Council have funded the Wind Festival out of grants outside of the district. However, they have applied in the past for the waiving of costs associated with traffic management. And so as part of the funding that is being given to the Arts Council, a portion of that would be used for that, for the purpose of road closures. However, the main event, like the Wind Festival itself, is funded not by the district, but through other granting bodies.
Okay, thank you. I do think we need a discussion about what festivals belong in what buckets. And do we have an expectation at the moment in the money for the Community Foundation that they would be handling things like applications for the Seek Festival, or a Powwow, or Indigenous Peoples' Day? To my mind, that belongs in some sort of festivals or downtown events bucket as opposed to the Community Foundation bucket. And I'm looking for some clarity there. The other piece around 1.3C, the things that we will be enhancing with grants, together with C and D actually. So D points out that all applicants must consider how their, their project relates to equity and climate action. And I think that generally makes sense. But I am concerned that this seems to preclude the idea that you would have a project specifically focused on climate action or equity. And I think those should be, especially the climate action piece, given that it is one of our pillars in our strategic plan, that you should be able to apply for a grant on that piece specifically. And so I just want to be careful we're excluding that. I was curious too about trails maintenance in here, because we're talking about a SORCA grant. And I would assume, I guess I'm a little bit unclear if this policy is really applying to what the Community Foundation does, or Arts Council, or SORCA. Like, I guess I'm trying to, in some ways, it seems that it's a general policy. But in other ways, it seems that it's really focused on a community foundation piece. And I, so I'm wondering how they would decide how to prioritize. Like, could they just choose to do only neighborhood connectivity projects in one year? Or how do we, you know, do we have any say about how those things are balanced from year to year? Sorry, unmute, Ms. Dicker.
Thank you councillor Pedengill for your question through you. The, for the climate action and equity piece, staff decided to include that as we identified that as a requirement moving forward in terms of the current ongoings and council's direction with the climate action or climate emergency declaration as two specific factors that we wanted each applicant to consider in their, in their grant application. We did not include that as, sorry, base the policy on that because council's direction was to base the policy on the OCP goals and not directly linked to council's strategic plan. And so it's not to say that an application based on climate action specifically would not be considered. But it is a factor that we identified as important to recognize in the process.
Okay, thank you. And I apologize, I sort of bundled a few things into my question. How, is this a policy? We've asked the Arts Council to focus on a certain area and SORCA to focus on a certain area. So how do we know who's responsible for what pieces and how much weight they put on each piece? And do they push, you know, try and find a balance between these, all these things? Or they should focus on neighborhood connectivity on one year? Or who decides that?
Thank you councillor Pedengill for your question through you. We established the categories in the policy. And it is the intention that those categories would be used every year and not just one focused on per year going forward, to have as much inclusion as possible and diversity of applications.
Okay, council, any other thoughts or questions? Mayor Elliott?
I know we're making changes about, originally, we thought we would put money into staff's budgets so that they could reduce fees for not-for-profits and allocate space and do the in-kind piece of this around traffic management. What got hard about that? And I guess underlying my concern, Ms. Dicker, is that someone's event will get approved, but because of the effort to allocate money across as many people as possible, they, they won't cover traffic management, let's say. And then we have people coming to the district saying, well, they ran out of money and didn't cover my traffic management. So now will you grant that to me through council contingency or some other means? So I'm worried about this sort of knock-on effect if we don't have the leeway in the budget to do that at a staff level.
Thank you, Mayor Elliott through the chair. It was, upon staff review of the outline process in July, we considered how council has traditionally ran its granting scheme. And council has never previously separated an amount for in-kind services and an amount for cash services or cash requests. It has traditionally been considered altogether. And the best use of the money has been established by council through their deliberations. Moving forward, it kind of got more complicated when we began to specify that requests for in-kind needed to come through the district and then requests for the actual program going through a separate, a separate stream. And what happens if, if one is granted and one is not, et cetera? And so in this system, the applicant can request a quote from our Public Works Department for in-kind services and apply through the Community Foundation with that cost already established and guarantee from Public Works that the work can be done within their capacity. If that is not doable, then the applicant has the option to look at private services as well for their events. Also, in regards to space, when we did a deeper dive into the use of space by nonprofit societies at a non-discounted rate, so for council's information and for the public's information, there is already a discounted rate for groups that are predominantly made up of youth. And so there's already a discounted rate for those groups for space rental at the district. So when we took those groups out of the equation and looked at reducing the fee for the other groups, the impact wasn't as high. As well, we took into consideration the space availability currently within the district and allocating funding to that use specifically, given the current climate. And this may change moving forward in 2022. But right now, given the restrictions in place, we didn't see that that was going to be of a great benefit to the community at this stage. So that was the reason for the pivot on those points.
Thank you. If I just have a follow-up, I think in 1.3C, I would like to see another bullet added, possibly around something called social wellbeing, so that I can see a home for some of the traditional grantees that we've had in the past. Also, women's center, hospitals, helping hands, those sorts of asks. And I also wonder too, you know, we, we put in 1.2A that we have the goals of the official community plan, livable, healthy, resilient, connected, and engaged. And I wonder if it's not too hard to just put some of the keywords from those definitions in the OCP into, into those bullet points? Because they have quite broad meaning, but in our OCP, we do try and define them a little more clearly. So those would be my recommendations around just clarifying a little bit. And then finally, in 2.2D, basing the award of grant funding by establishing weighted assessment criteria, which includes alignment with the district's strategic plan. I think we should take that reference out. I think that was just an oversight. I think you meant to say the goals of the OCP.
Thank you, Mayor Elliott through the chair. They are great suggestions. And I think that definitely 2.2D was an oversight, and I apologize for that.
Thank you.
Okay, councillor Stoner?
Thank you through the chair. Just following up on one of Mayor Elliott's questions, I remember from previous years, there's often requests to waive tipping fees, for example, from some of the applicants. I'm just curious where that fits in.
Through the chair, thank you councillor Stoner. That, those requests would now be also streamed through the Community Foundation.
Follow-up councillor Stoner?
Yeah, I'm just kind of amusing, if it's necessary, it would be helpful to add an additional bullet point to 1.3C on something around environmental sustainability or that is a little bit more specific than the climate action note in 1.3D. But I will give that some thought and come back with a proposal if I have one. Thank you.
And if I could take this opportunity to just add on to Mayor Elliott's, I think we providing sort of some sort of animal pound or shelter, it seems like it's a challenge. And we do get requests for that. And so in the, I wonder if there's a way to word or consider the social services as being inclusive possibly of that, you know, as we consider everything else. The other thing, so reading this is what would stop the Community Foundation from approving an arts project or a trails project? Like, why couldn't I go to the Community Foundation and apply for that? And maybe there is another document that I just lost track of. But as I read this, I should be able to go to the Community Foundation and ask for a trails grant.
Thank you councillor Pedengill through you. We are working with the Arts Council and the Community Foundation, the establishment of guidelines and weighted criteria assessments for their grant programs. And so that will be established upon the creation of the grant programs. And it is our intention to align both groups, to have their granting streams open at the same time, and to be able to divert an application that doesn't fall under their granting stream into the other granting stream, or to communicate between each other on which granting stream an application should best be considered under. And so it will be a work in progress. And similarly, in the past, council have granted the Arts Council, as well as the Community Foundation, money for arts programs, as well as small community event programs. And so similarly, when council receive an application for an arts project in the past, that was redirected to the Squamish Arts Council. A similar situation would happen with these groups when such requests came forward.
Okay, thank you. Council, any more questions? Council, any more questions? Council Race?
Thank you. Just listening to the comments, I think, because we had a discussion with members of the community foundation board, and I expressed the opinion, it was my view, that at some point, we have to take our hands off this process, we as council, and leave it to them. There is, I think we have to appreciate that this is a delegation of decision-making, and we can set out some broad guidelines, but ultimately, it will be up to these different societies to make the decisions on grant, and that's what we're doing. And so I think we're not going to be able to micromanage this. Focus on the broad guidelines, certainly, but I think that's about as far as we want to go with that. Otherwise, we're making the wrong move by doing this. I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else, or does someone want to move? Recommendation, Councilor Stoner? Are you moving?
No, I was just going to, well, maybe I should move it with the proposed recommendations, but I was also wondering that maybe under 1.3C, in addition to the addition of social well-being, we also include environmental stewardship, just to call it out there. To hear from my colleagues on that one.
Counselor, does someone feel like a show of hands? Straw pull? Is that comfortable? So I see, Council French, I'll put my hand up on that. Council Race, it seems like we have some general agreement on that idea. So did you want to try a resolution? Council Stoner?
Yeah, I'll move that council approve the updated community grant policy. It had the special business meeting on October 6, 2020, with the inclusion of social well-being and environmental stewardship to 1.3C, additional language to, sorry, just pulling up the section, 1.2A, the official community plan bullet points.
Okay, Council French, second's that? Any discussion? Council French?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I support the motion and note that I believe this policy aligns with the original intent of the council that was instrumental in creating the Squamish Community Foundation. Back when that foundation was created, I felt that was a good move, and these many years later, I still feel that way. Thank you.
Okay, not seeing any other hands, so I'll call a question. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. And it's not in the copy that I have, but I think there is another, an ask to rescind the 2016 policy as well? Or were you intending to make that part of your, actually, no, we didn't say it, so I think someone, if someone wants to move that, rescind. Ms. Dicker?
I can include that in the motion with the amended policy on, for adoption on October 6.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, and so I think that's it for that item. And next, we are on to the Brennan Park Rec Center grant application, and we are quite a bit behind, so if we can try and be succinct, and I know I'm one of the worst violators of that, but let's see what we can do. Is Ms. Goldback taking this one?
Yes, hi. And Tori, are you able to pull up my presentation, please? Oh, I just asked if Tori could pull it up.
She doesn't have the presentation. I'll see if I can get it going, though I do have it.
Okay. Sorry, the video is on my phone, so I can't, can't do that from my phone. But I could just start talking.
Yes, please, if you can summarize or give us a...
Yeah, because we're, my name's Natasha Bullock, I'm the GM of Community Services, and with me is Devon Guest, Director of Recreation Services, and Cal Bragg, Director of Facility Planning, and we are here to, yeah, maybe I can open it up on this thing, actually. There we go. Oh, there, perfect, thank you, excellent. So we are here to move forward with a application, a grant application for the Brennan Park Wellness Center through the Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program. Next slide, please. So this is a $100 million fund from a blend of federal and provincial sources that is supporting cost sharing on infrastructure projects. There's two streams under this program. This grant application will go under the community culture and recreation stream. The fund supports 73% of eligible costs, and the applicant is responsible for the remainder. And just a little bit of background, we did have a conversation about this a couple of weeks ago, supporting moving forward on this, but just briefly, next slide, please. As background, Brennan Park is certainly overcapacity. The waitlist growth continues every year. We had 4200 program registrants last year, and about 25% of those were waitlisted, and then about a little over 11% were not able to be accommodated within the year. We have over 535,000 visits annually, which is rivaling some of the largest recreation centers in the country. Next slide, please. And then just a little bit of background from a capital management perspective, our capital requirements at the district, as we know and have discussed previously, are exceeding our available, our available capital, and so the real estate and facilities master plan has recommended that we seek alternative funding sources, as well as partnerships and space optimization to help meet some of these capacity demands. Squamish is a very rapidly growing community, particularly focused on recreation relative to other communities, and as we saw in the previous slide, that 57% growth in waitlists over the past four years is an indication that demand is only going one direction. So we are, in order to meet demands, we have to optimize the use of the facilities that we have already, as well as develop new capacity through funding sources external to taxation, such as this one. Next slide, please. So the concept for the wellness center is three floors of space, the bottom floor being a fitness center with a focus on rehab and neuro, and then also a gymnasium and a sort of general fitness area on the bottom floor, and then program space, including a significant dedication to art space on the second floor, and then the third floor is a leasable space, which I'll get to more in a moment. We're also including in this application a covered outdoor space so that we're able to expand programming into the outdoors. This is not only going to enhance our resilience through pandemic times, and so that we can continue to provide programming through when it's not as comfortable or recommended for people to be participating in programs indoors, we can still maintain that continuity of service, but it's also increasing our year-round ability to serve people in the outdoors. As we know, it rains quite a lot here, and it snows quite a lot, and with some infrastructure that provides weather protection, we can continue to utilize the outdoors for programming. Next slide, please. Exit audio-only mode. So the leasable space area is the third floor to health and wellness services, and the model is that the lease revenue, it covers the capital costs, because the grant does not cover, will not provide the capital for a leasable portion of the building, so that would be funded from municipal borrowing. But the model is that the debt servicing costs on that portion of the building would be covered by the lease revenue. On September 15, council directed staff to do some analysis on whether or not we could expand that model of a leasable floor to a fourth floor, but staff did determine that to be likely unpalatable. We do have annual capacity limits on borrowing that are set by policy, and we have a lot of capital pressures in terms of the real estate and facilities master plan, critical facility replacements in the next five years, and so to add a fourth floor would take up some of that borrowing capacity that is already pressured, and the result would be that the critical projects in the real estate facilities master plan would be pushed out to future years, so it's not being recommended at this time. A daycare partnership is going to be explored in the existing footprint. That is something that there have been conversations about in the past and could potentially be explored. It is referenced in the grant application, but there isn't time to create a formal MOU or establish a partnership or the details of such an arrangement, and there's also not a need to do that prior to the application. So we've indicated the intention to explore it. Next slide, please. So this is a table just demonstrating the sources of funding and what that would look like, because, as I mentioned, the leasable space is not eligible, that would be covered by district capital contributions, and then the floors one and two, district portion is that 27% of eligible funding. The grant funding is the remaining 73%, which leaves a tax impact equal to the debt servicing on that 23%, 27%, rather, 2.375 million. Next slide, please. So two recommendations that we bring forward to the special meeting on September 29, the authorization to submit an application as follows, and I'm open to questions.
Council, Council Race?
Thank you. So two comments, I guess, or questions. I mean, one, with respect to the fourth floor, I recall a discussion, and in my mind, I think it was Councilor Anderson that raised it, but in my mind, it wasn't necessarily that we would do a fourth floor right off the bat, but have the ability to come along perhaps five years later and add a fourth floor, recognizing that the costs of doing it as part of the original construction might be prohibitive. So that's one thing, and the second thing is, when I start to think about this, I mean, when this first came to council a couple of years ago, and we were applying for a grant then, we were applying for, my recollection is we were applying for about $9 million out of a potential cost of $12 million, give or take, rough numbers, and we were applying for a fund that had about $50 million in it, and we were told by the fund managers, the feds, that unlikely we were going to get nine out of 50 for our one project, and so we went through that, and we went for Plan B, which is a smaller part, which ultimately we didn't get either, but it was a smaller grant, and we had a better chance of success. But back then, when we were first conceding this, we weren't talking about leasing space. We said, don't recall that, and we were thinking about the whole thing being for recreation. And so now we're talking about leasing off this top floor, and so I'm wondering why we would bother. If it's not for recreation, what does it do to fill the recreation need, the programming need, which is the fundamental, fundamental need here, I see, and I agree with that. But now we're talking about creating a floor which is nothing but leased space, it will just pay for itself. Typically with those types of things, I mean, they're going to be relatively long-term leases, they're not six-month leases, they're year leases, people have to put a provision and so forth. And so where's the benefit to this sort of recreation need of having that floor at all?
Through the chair, thank you for the question. So just to address your first point around the ability to add on layers in future years, that is something that's been contemplated in the costing. We do need to get updated costs because they're now a couple of years old, but in the original Class D estimates that were developed a couple of years ago now as part of the recreate Your Brennan Park planning process, that was contemplated, that the ability to expand and add layers over time would be there, because we know that we probably won't build another one of these in the next, you know, medium term. So that expansion capacity is being considered. The leasable area is, it is contemplated that that space would be able to be taken over by recreation services at the end of a lease term, so that as the community grows again, we are able to move into that space. And so it would be a longer-term lease, so in the short and medium term, the plan is to build the wellness center and optimize our other facilities, and as we reach capacity between the two floors of wellness center and the other facilities and partnerships that already exist or will exist in the coming future, when we reach capacity on those, you know, that'll take us into the future enough that we would be seeing the end of the lease term, and then we'd be able to have the option to move into the additional floor and have the capital costs have been covered from that, that construction. Does that help? Thank you.
Councilor Anderson?
My question has really partly been answered, and it was just to clarify that the intention when we were discussing adding a fourth floor last time was to consider design for future consideration. We had, just by way of example, we had a tour with Mr. Hoskins two years ago, and some aspects of the structural system were looked at in terms of, what do we do about this? What can we do? And specifically, there's some steel framing above the front entrance lobby that it's not actually clear what the intention of it was when the building was put together. So there is an example in the building of, what do we do with this in future? How can we take advantage of it, or can't we? So indicating such a design intent might perhaps be attractive for the application, and of course, lightweight, prefabricated, panelized, or modular systems entirely feasible in future. So just to clarify that, the intent, I think, from our discussion was to focus on this as a design feature to accommodate some potential future fourth floor. Thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Goldback, I apologize if you mentioned this in your presentation. I'd just like to clarify the nature of the, I guess, crown lease or crown grant where the Adventure Center sits. That prevents us from doing this as a commercial lease. Any lease there would have to be for a not-for-profit or a government institution of some sort? Is that correct?
For recreational purposes is the language that's used, and we have been advised that health or wellness services would fit into that definition in the context of a wellness center.
So are we, I guess then that raises the question, it seems in other discussions we've been hesitant to get into commercial real estate or things that will possibly compete with private business, and it sounds like we are leaving that possibility open here.
I wouldn't say that we're leaving that possibility open. This is not a space that would be designated for a commercial enterprise, but for health and wellness services of a commercial nature.
Okay, Council? So, okay, do you have a second, or? Councilor Stoner? And you're moving both parts?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, I will call a question. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Council, we are, we're about 20 minutes late right now, is that correct? Yeah, 20 minutes late. Straw pull, come back at 12:30. Hands versus 12:45? 12:30? One, two, 12:45? One, two, three, okay, I guess it's 12:45 that wins it, so we'll have to try and make up some time afterwards. I will see you back at 12:45, and we are recessed for lunch. Thank you. Thank you. You're welcome back, everyone. Uh, we are on to the seniors hub and just want to remind everyone, we have a hard stop at two thirty for the LMLGA AGM. And uh, just checking my email before I forget to say it, that uh we use our regular UBCM login info, it's the same stuff in app that'll get us into the LMLGA AGM. So with that, I will turn it over, uh, I believe to Ms. Goldbeck again.
Hi, thanks. Um, thanks, uh, council. Uh, my name's Natasha Goldbeck, I'm the general manager of Community Services. Uh, Robin, are you able to put up my PowerPoint now, please? And I'll just say while that's loading, that I I apologize to uh council and others for some of the information I'm going to be uh speaking to right now.
Sorry, folks, looks like we're having a few technical difficulties. So we'll uh be back at it shortly.
Oh, somebody just told me I disconnected. Am I there?
Yeah, you're there now, but we missed, I think, basically everything you said. I don't know if it'll help to turn off your camera or, um, it's clear right now, though.
Okay, I'll try, okay, so you can hear me? Yep, okay.
Yes, we can.
So I just wanted to um acknowledge that some of the information I'm going to be presenting right now uh is uh repetition from the presentation I did about an hour ago. Um, so, but for the benefit of the public who uh perhaps missed the last presentation, uh, I am going to go through it again, so just recognizing to for council that there will be a little bit of repetition. Um, also, just wanting to acknowledge that there is a lot of words on all of these slides, and I'm I'm sorry about that. Uh, it is dense information, so um eight, uh, just to be super clear, there's lots of words on the page, but I will talk through it, uh, hopefully effectively. Uh, okay, next slide, please. So the Real Estate Facilities Master Plan, which was adopted in twenty nineteen, uh, did show uh that we cannot accommodate all of the new facilities we require uh through our regular funding sources. Uh, for a couple of reasons. One is that we do have borrowing caps that are set by policy, so we can only borrow s- a certain uh amount of money every year, and that is a natural limitation on the speed with which we can develop new facilities. Um, secondarily, uh, that borrowing needs to be debt serviced and that is generally funded by taxation. And we know that uh the community has a uh a limitation in their tolerance for uh how much taxation can uh can be uh increased every year. So there's two reasons that are very important uh sandbox elements in terms of our the speed with which we can develop um and replace end-of-life facilities. Um, and we do have a lot of critical facilities that need to be developed. As we know from the Real Estate and Facilities Master Plan, our our fire hall, our public yard and municipal hall are are end-of-life and are listed in the critical facilities uh prior to the core facilities, which includes recreation facilities. Uh, though those are also um end-of-life and in need of of expansion, as we'll talk about in a moment. Next slide. So the answer that the Real Estate and Facilities Master Plan provided was the recommendation that we pursue alternative funding models uh as well as optimized usage of existing facilities. And and the reason for that is that we want to defer or minimize capital investment investment wherever possible to create room for those critical facilities, many of which are not able to be um optimized or or eligible for other uh funding options. Next slide. Uh, and then it just in terms of Brennan Park and our recreation capacity, um, the Recreation Center at Brennan Park is is deeply overcapacity. Uh, we have wait lists um in in many, many program areas that grow every year. Uh, and that should say implementation of allocation policies, not implantation of allocation policies. That's a, that's a super awkward typo. Um, so we've done some allocation policies which smoothed demand over the course of the day. Uh, and that has helped with waitlist growth, but it um that the waitlists are nonetheless uh increasing in pressure as the community grows and the demand of recreation services in this particular community is very high. Um, so we are required to um smooth capacity and demand over other facilities. Uh, and uh, the fifty-five Activity Center is the only district facility that does operate below capacity, showing at about nineteen percent, which I'll speak to more in a moment. Next slide. So this is the uh the program room usage for the fifty-five over the last twelve months. Um, the uh, the spring twenty twenty uh data, just as a as a caveat, was uh extrapolated based on bookings, because as as folks know, due to COVID, uh, the operations changed. But this is uh representing a typical twelve-month period in this contemporary context uh with uh almost thirteen thousand hours uh available and uh twenty-four hundred being used. Next slide. And then in terms of Brennan Park, just as a as a comparator, um forty-two hundred program registrants last year with um thirteen hundred waitlisted. And then uh almost five hundred of those waitlisted were not be able to be accommodated within the year that they were waitlisted. Um, and that waitlist growth has has gone up by fifty-seven percent from twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen. Brennan Park sees um five hundred and thirty-five uh visits annually and increases every year. And that that does rival the busiest direct centers and largest rec centers in the country. So the uh financial information, which I'll speak to now, um, I just wanted to uh put an umbrella over it that it's not really able to be extracted by facility um because our technology limitations are are significant in recreation. Our rec management software is um is about to be replaced where we've with the work plan is is underway to replace that through the Technology Transformation Program that the district district is undertaking. Uh, so what we've done is some some cost items were able to be extracted um directly by facility, but the ones that were not, uh, what we did is we uh looked at the scheduling for this the center and um visitation data and inferred uh approximate costs by for the fifty-five specifically. Next slide. Next slide, please. Am I still here?
Sorry, we can, we can hear you.
You can hear me, but the screen is not moving for me, is it for you?
We're on seniors engagement as the screen.
Oh, no, sorry, go back one. Thank you, got it. Uh, so this is what the financial information looks like for uh in the current state for the fifty-five. User fees, um, but the uh admin booking and and program coordination and facility costs are are not. So that is a a net cost. So a net's out to about four thirty-two, uh, four thirty-three a year. Next one. So the seniors engagement um was done extensively through the um Senior Center Revitalization Project uh that uh took place in twenty seventeen. Um, the, uh, it was really identified that uh dedicated senior space was really critical, that uh what we heard from the community is that seniors wouldn't go to a place um that was not, that didn't have that kind of dedicated social uh and program space for the the unique needs of their community uh and that they didn't necessarily want to mix with other age groups and other demographics. That said, some seniors said that they did want that, uh, but there was a a relatively significant portion of the community that um would that really felt strongly that program participation and visitation hinged directly on having that dedicated space. So we we hear that, we feel that, and we don't want to lose that uh that value and that feedback that we heard from the community. Um, the Senior Center Society, which is a group of uh very valuable um and and experienced um experts in uh seniors engagement and community development, they've done a ton of work uh and including fundraising to create the fifty-five Activity Center as a really valued um dedicated seniors space. So there was um a uh, uh, the, an action plan that emerged from the Senior Center Revitalization uh project. Um, the purpose of the project was to work together to create a strategy to increase visitation and utilization because the underutilization uh of the fifty-five, previously the Senior Center, has been a longstanding issue. And so this project was undertaken for the purpose of uh creating that increased utilization of the the latent asset. Um, it was really extensive community engagement, as I said, uh, and there were recommendations about how to action that feedback, uh, and that was vetted by the Senior Center Society as well as other groups uh of of stakeholders and seniors across the community. There were sixteen action items that came out of that plan. Um, we did an audit uh recently of where they're all at. Fourteen of them are either resolved uh or or in process. Um, the, there was a lot of success out of that plan. Uh, and we really want to highlight and value the work and the collaboration that was done through through implementing that plan. Um, the the newsletter and advertising uh bus trips, which has been immensely popular among seniors, and there often is a waitlist, it's the only program area that does have a waitlist um through uh through the fifty-five. Um, lots of new program ideas that came from the community engagement. Uh, and and some of them did not result in enough um participation to, for the instructors uh to continue them on as a viable program, but many of them did result in good participation. And and that's um really fantastic and otherwise wouldn't have been able to happen. Uh, there was a value of having social events, uh, so the district supports for social events a year for seniors out of the fifty-five, which are very well attended. Um, there's a volunteer program uh that that's been implemented and and expanded, uh, low-cost and free program options. Um, despite that, the outcome that the project sought of increasing utilization, uh, it it was not achieved. Um, there have been ups and downs in utilization, minor ups and downs over the years, but there hasn't been um a notable increase uh in the last couple of years as a result of this this work. Next slide. So the objective of pursuing the opportunity that is in front of us, which I'll I'll get to now, um, is that we do want to ensure fiscal responsibility and accessible programming. And we don't want to lose that value of having dedicated seniors space. So the opportunity that's in front of us, uh, our hope is that it hits both of those, both of those marks. So there is a uh a new two hundred and thirty-two unit uh of affordable seniors housing being developed um called the West Winds, and it's uh going to be operated by the Squamish Senior Citizens Home Society. Uh, they're the owners of the building. This is about a hundred and fifty meters from uh from the fifty-five. Uh, it includes um six thousand square feet of programmable space, which is comparable to the uh programmable space at the fifty-five. Uh, the footprint of the fifty-five is ten thousand square feet, but four thousand of that is is not programmable. It's administrative and storage. Uh, so it is comparable in terms of size. Um, the model would be that it's open to the public, uh, the the general seniors public in Squamish, so you don't have to live there to access the programs, uh, but that it would be programmed primarily for seniors. Um, the the benefit of having seniors programming in the ground floor of a two hundred and thirty-two unit building of seniors housing is that we're bringing programs to the seniors. So that accessibility for that population would in staff's estimation, result in a a kind of natural increase in accessibility and um program utilization. Um, there wouldn't really be any other uh district use suitable for this space. Um, because such as it's been suggested that we make that uh multi-use space rather than a a senior space, but uh the um Squamish Sen- Seniors Home Society has indicated that uh the ground floor has to be appropriate for the building residents because the objective is to make it accessible for the building residents as well and useful uh and valuable for for that population. So uh, this is the opportunity that best fits that model. So in terms of the program model and what exactly that looks like, um, it hasn't been developed. Uh, and our hope is that we can pursue some uh engagement with seniors across Squamish um to to fill in those details and figure out what's going to work best in terms of um accessibility, what kinds of programs, what um, what what sort of model we would we would pursue. Um, we also want to engage on the capital improvements that make the space programmable. Um, the walls at this point will not be able to be moved, but there are many other elements um that uh we think that that seniors of Squamish could really provide some input on and and shape the space into something that's really going to work for them. Uh, I'll just put a little caveat on that, too, that um uh we would be, the district of Squamish would be um, we we would be entering into a lease. So it, we don't own the space, uh, we would be a a tenant, an anchor tenant, but nonetheless, any engagement would have to be in a considerable partnership with the Senior Citizens Home Society, uh, especially in terms of capital improvements. Uh, and then the other point just about uh capital improvements is that the building is being built right now. So the opportunity to um have the walls be in the places that we want to support uh programmable and uh social space and and meet the needs of the community would have to happen relatively quickly. If we um, if we delayed this decision and and decided later that we wanted to take advantage of this opportunity, um, the space may not be available to us anymore because the the owner may choose to engage in another partnership um rather than having that that empty space. Uh, and also, if we had to do the improvements as a retrofit, they would be uh much more expensive. So so staff do feel that time is of the essence. Next slide, please. So the implications, uh, uh, the West Winds is expected to be ready for occupancy mid next year uh and that the fifty-five will thereafter be able to absorb some of the capacity pressure from Brennan Park. Um, the intention from Recreation Services is to continue to provide both seniors and uh intergenerational programming at the fifty-five and at Brennan Park. Uh, but those spaces would not be dedicated for seniors. Um, the dedicated senior space would be the seniors wellness hub. Um, we've also, uh, you know, certainly uh supportive of the Senior Center Society continuing to offer uh uh the social events and meals out of the fifty-five. There is um lots of room for uh those kinds of conversations as as plans evolve. Um, so there is an airspace agreement for the fifty-five, um, and uh it has uh restricted uses uh indicated, um, which is not that it prescribes what the space should be for, but it says rather what the space should not be used for. Uh, this in great agreement is uh registered on title. Uh, if council has more questions about the agreement, uh, we can get into that after, but if we're okay to move on from that to get through the presentation, I think that would be best.
Yes, please proceed.
Next, please. Um, so the financial information for the uh MOU that we're proposing to enter into uh is that the lease costs are fifty thousand dollars a year for the first five years. Uh, and that reflects an amortization of the tenant improvement capital costs. Uh, after that's paid down in five years, the the lease costs will be thirty thousand a year. Um, and maintenance and janitorial are provided by the licensor and and would not be a cost to the district. Next one. Um, so construction is underway, uh, capital improvements uh need to be committed. need to be committed shortly so that the opportunity is not lost to develop the TIs during construction. And you have a recommendation in front of you to enter into an MOU to pursue a license agreement. And I am happy to take questions.
Okay, council. All right, Councilor Herford.
Thank you. Could staff take us through quickly the airspace agreement of the current 55?
Yeah, Robin, did you want to speak to that, or would you like me to?
Hi there. I've got it right in front of me. I can go through which part of it. The airspace agreement is included in the easement document, and it is included as a restrictive covenant. It appears as Article 6. And the restrictive covenant over the airspace parcel basically prohibits the district from using any part of the airspace for obnoxious uses for business or use that creates strong and unusual or offensive odors, and it goes on to talk about odorous nuisances that emits noise or sounds which are objectionable. Then it says, talks a little bit about the remainder owner, which is the Strata, and what their duties are as far as recognizing that we are operating a kitchen in there, and so that they can't complain about the use of the kitchen. Section B talks about some very specific restrictions on use, and it may not be used or leased or occupied for industrial or manufacturing purposes for the purpose of any business whose primary use is as a distributor, auctioneer, retailer of commercial merchandise, as a bar, a pub, a bowling alley, billiard parlor, discotheque, strip club, massage parlor, adult entertainment store, adult bookstore, amusement arcade, off-track bedding parlor, pawn shop, or any business whose primary use is a place of drinking, entertainment, gaming, or gambling. And then it talks about permitted use of airspace parking, which is associated with the building. There are exceptions to the use of the airspace to those listed above. And it says, "For greater certainty, the remainder owner acknowledges and agrees that it's intended that the restrictions set out in 6.1 shall not prohibit the airspace to be used as a senior center or a community center for citizens of Squamish." And so because what it speaks to are exceptions, that means what we can't use it for, and all other uses under this agreement would be acceptable and up to the district.
Councilor Herford, is that the clarity you're looking for?
Yes, thank you. That provides the clarity I was looking for. Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Race.
Thank you. Ms. Goldbeck, I just wanted to maybe just go through some of the timelines because I think as I've been watching these emails come through over the past couple of weeks, I might be confused about some dates and some things. My understanding with the 55 was that, I mean, the quality of discussion certainly about the existing youth center being essentially condemned and having to transfer youth programming into the 55. Then I saw an email that said that that lasted for about a month or so, and youth programming has now been put in different places. And to be honest, I missed that point. I don't know if I was away or not, but in any event, I just assumed that it was continuing on to this present day. So that was a mistake on my part, and maybe on others' too, and some of the public. But my understanding then from the emails and from the presentation is the 55 will continue on more or less in its present format as far as use goes, dedicated for seniors, until the West Winds project, assuming we go ahead with that, is completed, which is give or take the middle of next year. And at that time, all the dedicated seniors programming will be moved to there. The 55 will ultimately become more of a multi-use or a multi-age use facility. But between now and the time that the seniors moved into the West Wind, is it going to be continued as dedicated seniors, or will there be other uses in there? And are there other uses today?
Thanks for the question through the chair. I also have received some feedback from the community that indicates there's been a bit of a misunderstanding around the youth use of the space. When the youth center had to suddenly close in early spring due to some structural issues, some youth programming after-school hours was moved into the 55. And then COVID happened, and the entire 55 had to close due to kind of pandemic control issues. It is still currently closed. It is our hope to open it up again soon, as we've spoken previously in council about the recreation pandemic facility plans. But the youth, and so to your point, yes, the the existing model from prior to the closure will continue of after 4:00 PM having some mixed use in the space. The youth center is going to be effectively replaced by the Youth Hub, which is being built in the ground floor of the Buckley Avenue Housing Building operated by Sea to Sky. So just so folks are aware, there is a home in the future for the kind of anchor of youth services. They are currently operating in a distributed model in the community, in schools, in places where youth hang out, like the skate park. So Youth Services is currently operating without a facility, the facility access to the 55, and that's going fairly well. We're hoping to have a Youth Services update soon. But the understanding from some members of the community that the 55 is going to become the youth center is not accurate. It will be a multi-use space in the afternoons and evenings until the West Winds opens.
Councilor Race.
And just as a follow-up to that, and I think we've all seen the emails, there's concern that what's proposed for the West Winds wouldn't cover or really accommodate well some of the activities that seniors like. One of the examples given are art classes, for example, because there's no plumbing for them, or there's no separate room for some of these rooms, or particular floor for some of the the exercise classes, which makes it easier. So is the intent, I haven't seen any kind of plan for the West Wind, but is the intent to try to incorporate some of those things into the West Wind? Or would we go on with the West Wind being more or less one large open space and and some of those particular activities that I just mentioned, like art classes, for example, being conducted at the 55 in the future?
Through the chair, there is certainly capacity to have all kinds of different program offerings in the West Winds. There are multiple program rooms, which could be used for art, for fitness, for any number of types of activities. The, as I suggested, the walls at this point probably couldn't really be moved, but elements like different kinds of flooring materials or, you know, sinks, that's the kind of feedback that we'd want to get from the seniors community to be able to, you know, make sure that we can accommodate as best as possible within capital limitations, of course. Again, I'll just mention that we are the tenants, so this the engagement about what the space looks like would have to be done in partnership with the owner of the building and engagement with the broader seniors community of Squamish.
Okay, thank you. And I have Mayor Elliott.
Councilor Race addressed my questions. Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Stoner, and then Councilor Anderson.
Councilor Race addressed almost all of my questions. I'll just pick up on that last piece that you were speaking about, Ms. Goldbeck. I think one of the other things that I'm hearing and seeing in the correspondence that we're receiving is a little bit of a frustration with regards to the engagement timeline. I recognize that you spoke in your presentation about this being a little bit time-sensitive in order to be able to use this opportunity of where the current construction is at. But I'm curious if you can speak a little bit to the opportunity, if you see this moving forward, for engagement with the seniors community in order to get that feedback for what the space is going to look like internally.
Yeah, thank you. Through the chair. We do foresee great opportunities for engagement with the seniors community. The seniors community in Squamish is fairly broad, and the Senior Center Society makes up some of it. And there are other groups as well that we want to hear from, multi-faith groups, Lions Club, other sort of stakeholders and organizations that represent different segments of the seniors population. So we've spoken at a high level, not in detailed plans yet, because we're relatively new in developing this opportunity. This is the first time it's being spoken about in this format. So the plans are not dealt with significantly. But the intention from the district Recreation Services and from the owner of the building is to make sure we get a broad spectrum of feedback from the seniors community about what this looks like. Something like a committee that informs program offerings and some open house-type workshop-y conversations to inform program design, I think would probably be appropriate in this situation. And there's definitely time to incorporate those kinds of conversations prior to anything being too far down the track.
Councilor Anderson.
Yes, I'll start with a matter that's addressed in the key terms of the of the license and the proposed MOU, and that is parking. There is reference to 20 parking spots, including two disabled stalls. I am, would be concerned about that number of disabled stalls, or whatever terminology we may use, that that may not be sufficient. But I'm not the expert on that. I do have substantial experience in trying to find parking in this general area. I visit it quite frequently, probably at least once a week with another family member over the years. And I note during the 2017 revitalization project, there was substantial discussion of parking challenges. I wonder if you could address that specific term in the proposed MOU, please.
Yep, through the chair. Thank you, Councilor Anderson. The number of parking stalls are allocated in the building code. We are aware that the availability of parking is going to be a challenge, as it is in many areas of Squamish. Third Avenue, once construction is no longer occurring, does tend to have quite a bit of parking along that backside of the strip mall there, and this is on a bus route. So it is actually, in that sense, more accessible in terms of parking and transit than the existing 55. So that is going to be a sort of natural limitation, but one that we do see a bit of an improvement from the current state.
Thank you. So as I've mentioned, to follow up with another question, as I mentioned, parking was a topic that was addressed during the 2017 revitalization project. And that took place with representatives from not only the Senior Center Society, but other community members. The audit that you've referred to of the 2017 project, I wondered whether there has been, and this is a follow-up to my question, that there has been a discussion of that audit with the Senior Center Society. And the reason why I ask this, and my real question is, is I'm curious about the status of the September 2015 collaboration agreement between the district Recreation Services and the Senior Center Society. It would seem to me that there hasn't to council at this time or this round because the senior center has been a matter for over a number of years, including the 2017 project and earlier in our term. But I just haven't seen an accounting for the status of that 2015 agreement. And I wonder if you may comment specifically on that. It is referenced in the 2017 literature, but that 2017 project was a distinct initiative aside from that collaboration agreement.
Yeah, thank you. To, and I reviewed this this morning. The collaboration agreement, to my knowledge, is still in effect. And the role of each party in the collaboration agreement in terms of the Senior Center Society being consulting on, advising, and making recommendations to recreation staff about program options and opportunities, supporting volunteerism, and seeking fundraising and grant opportunities, as well as engagement with the broader seniors community, that being the role of the Senior Center Society. And the role of Recreation Services and district staff is to engage and consult with the society and other community members about needs and having the opportunity to obtain feedback from the community. And creating a healthy environment, a welcoming environment, and optimized usage of the facility, as we've discussed previously. When we look at the various roles in the collaboration agreement, I would say that those things are being met, certainly. This is, you know, both of those the aspects of our collaboration are still the expectation of both parties.
If I may follow up, really to express a concern, and I'm concerned with the lack of acknowledgement of that agreement and of specifically the society. I have been exposed to their work for over 12 years. I was with a community group that rented from them at the Tampa Senior Center. And I'm concerned about the language that we will consult the seniors community or the broader seniors community. That language is already in the collaboration agreement, and it is really reflecting the roles of both of those parties in that agreement. So I'm really not yet satisfied with the status of that agreement, and I know that I'm not alone in observing the course of events over recent years. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Go to Councilor French.
Thank you, Chair, and I think I'll pick up where Councilor Anderson has left off and take that a little bit higher. I recall a time when the Squamish Senior Center Society and the District of Squamish worked very well together. It's what ultimately moved that group out of an abandoned B.C. Hydro building into what we now know as the 55 Activity Center. And I think that moving forward, we need to do something to improve the relations between the Squamish Senior Center Society and the District of Squamish. And I'd like to hear from staff if there are any thoughts on how that can be achieved.
Ms. Goldbeck.
It's a very broad question, and thanks for that. I think staff definitely acknowledge that there has been some relationship challenges over the years. I think there's an opportunity to have another look at the governance model and being, I think, a little bit more clear about what what the channels for engagement and feedback are and what the expectations of both parties are in terms of communication with one another. Staff have certainly felt that, too, and we have had some relationship breakdown over the years. In my recent dealings with the Senior Center Society, I found their expertise to be very valuable and very astute, and certainly encouraged accountability from the district staff, which is our wish also. So I think that there's a lot of opportunity and good people and good intentions on all sides of these conversations about what the future of seniors look like. And some opportunity to maybe nail that down further in some governance modeling that's more specific. One thing that I did mention to the Senior Center Society recently, and I think it's worthy of some exploration if they're interested, is the age-friendly community assessment model that's been developed by the province and is a vetted model for ensuring that municipalities are developing programs and services and facilities in a way that do meet the diverse needs
and services and facilities in a way that do meet the diverse needs of different age groups, including seniors. So I think that might be a good place to start in terms of improving our relationship going forward, is doing some mutual assessment of that nature.
And just one quick follow-up, if I may, Chair. In asking my question, I don't want to be perceived as pointing a finger at any one side or any individuals involved, because it's a two-way street, I have no doubt about that. And I'm encouraged by the response. And I would hope that the Squamish Senior Center Society is listening in. And the relationship can be repaired sooner than later, so that we can move forward with this with a little less tension than what we've been experiencing. Thank you.
So before I go to Counselor Reese, I have a few questions of my own. And they're sort of, the first set is around the flexibility outlined in the MOU. And, you know, because I've heard that, you know, the timelines are tight, and if we want to have the space designed the way we want it to be, we need to move more quickly, or we'll lose this opportunity. But also that the center, I'm getting my societies mixed up, but the West Wind is not comfortable with a different group, they only want seniors there. So that suggests to me that they have a need to find something that is actually quite accommodating to seniors, whether or not we are renting space there. So it's in that context that I have some of these questions. We talked about the relative space size, and doing arts programming and fitness programming at the West Wind. So what sort of storage space will we have? Because we only have the space until 2:00 P.M. as proposed, but to lock off that equipment for the rest of the time? And what sort of commitments and expectations are there?
Thank you, through the chair. I, just to your first point about usage, I just want to clarify my earlier comments. I believe that the Senior Center, Seniors Citizens Home Society would like control over who they lease to, to ensure that it is appropriate and valuable to their members. I think that if we came to them, for example, and said, you know what, what we really want to do here, what we really have need for is a daycare. I think that that's the kind of thing that they would probably not be amenable to. But if we do not take this lease opportunity, they may explore other relationships with other partners in the community to provide different kinds of services, or businesses, or whatever that might be, that they would see as in alignment with the tenant population. So just wanted to be clear about that. In terms of storage, preliminary drawings I've seen do include storage. I'm sorry, I can't speak to the exact storage capacity at the moment. But I think that's the sort of thing that we could develop through an engagement conversation, that we say, you know, like if these are the kinds of programs, that's going to work only if we have, you know, some storage capacity. So what would that look like, and how do we accommodate that? So I think those kinds of things we can probably work with. And those needs would not likely be deal breakers. That said, you know, I'll remind us also that we have the 55 as well. So if there is some programming that requires a great deal of storage that wouldn't be able to be accommodated there, if that was the case, we certainly could, you know, work with our other facility options to make sure that we're accommodating it.
Okay, thank you. I just, yeah, it's sometimes easier said than done with art supplies and that kind of thing. Logistically, it can be more challenging if it's not on site. It does propose having Monday to Friday until 2:00 P.M. Do we have any room to sort of request preferential rates or priority bookings for seniors outside of that time, or senior society, for example, and/or to do something to try and avoid it sitting unused after 2:00 P.M.? So if it's not booked, sort of require that it be left open to seniors in the community? Is there room for that kind of thing in this MOU?
I would say there's definitely not room for us to require the activities to be one way or another outside of our lease time. That said, that is certainly something that we've spoken about with the society in terms of the vision for the spaces, that it is a seniors hub. And so, you know, other community groups using it or renting the space for other purposes, the intention certainly is that that is primarily a seniors-directed space. So I think that that would probably materialize. But I couldn't say for sure, and we don't have control over it.
And so, okay, so I'll just highlight that as a concern, that it, you know, that it might sit empty after 2:00 P.M., and I would really like to avoid that, even if the amounts we're talking about here are reasonable until 2:00 P.M. It does concern me to have a site sitting. I will go to Counselor Reese next.
Thank you, Chair. Back to the engagement, I can understand, you know, just thinking about construction projects, that there's a point where retrofitting, as you put it, becomes more expensive. And so I'm just wondering, given the schedule of that building, how long, practically speaking, do we have before, you know, changes to that space become more expensive? You know, for example, we can't get into studs, drywalls on it and stuff like that, if we want to plum it, put in wiring for things. So in effect, the engagement process has to take place more or less within that time, as far as possible, if we want to kind of customize the space. I'm just wondering roughly how long that might be.
Through the chair, I know that we are pushing the timeline a little bit. The important milestone is to get a commitment that we are indeed going to pursue the agreement, and that the funding for capital improvements will be in place. That's kind of the first milestone that needs to be hit. In terms of timeline for, you know, developing the space and the fit-out and those design elements, my understanding is that we do have some time there. It's, we're not at the point of drywall going up or anything like that just yet, and the conversations do seem to be, you know, not advanced in that sense beyond sort of where the walls go. So I can't say exactly by the, kind of how many months we have from now, but I do know that the mean time pressure is just about the commitment to be proceeding with capital improvements.
Second question. Yes, go ahead.
And it's actually unrelated, but the other subject, the emails that I've been getting, and probably others as well, have been this thing, for lack of a better phrase, I'll use senior strategy. And I will say for myself, it seemed to be two different issues, really. And I'm just wondering, you know, one is the space that we're talking about, and the other is the strategy. Do we have anything on the go related to what we might consider to be a senior strategy?
Thank you. I, yeah, I think, you know, staff are definitely open to those kinds of conversations in a more formal sense. The 2017 project of seniors center revitalization was effectively the senior strategy. That was the objectives, the desired outcomes, and the action plan to achieve those outcomes is essentially what that was. And though the action items, many of them were moved forward on, the outcomes weren't quite achieved. So I think that there is definitely room for a fresh look at a focused strategy, doing good community engagement in terms of how we deliver services, and what's our communication channels, so that we make sure that we are capturing all that feedback? And what are our benchmarks we want to hit for utilization? I think there's definitely good room for that. I do want to add, too, to that conversation, that as a career operational strategist myself, I have done many operational strategies. And I think it would be a very compelling strategic opportunity by, you know, any estimation, really, that we want to align capacity with demand. That is typically an operational tenant that most strategies would seek to achieve. So I think, you know, if council decides to move forward on this, I think we can do a strategy, or maybe an age-friendly assessment, or whatever that looks like, some kind of work to make sure that it's being optimized, and the desired outcomes are being achieved. But I don't think that any strategy would recommend necessarily against the alignment of capacity and demand.
Okay, I have Mayor Elliott, and I lost track of the other hands when I was speaking, so if you can put up your hands again, but I'll go to Mayor Elliott now, please.
Just a point through to Counsel Reese, you're really difficult to hear today, so I don't know if something's covering up your microphone, but just so that you know. My question is, and I'm sorry if I miss this in the agreement, is if West Winds or the Seniors Home Society decides that they don't want the district to lease the space anymore, because they'd like to have a different leasing in the space, how long, or what is the notice period? Because I think we do have an obligation to ensure that there's always dedicated senior space. So what's being written into the agreement to give us that runway, should they change their mind?
Through the chair, that is still up for discussion. If council has some direction of some requirements they'd like us to include, we can certainly work with that feedback.
I think that's always been a critical part of our discussions. Around the 55 is ensuring some sort of dedicated space for seniors. And so I would want to ensure that we have a sufficiently lengthy notice period so that we can plan for that. So I think it's something that I would like to see in the agreement.
Okay, I'll go to Counselor Anderson.
Chair, I take it we'll have some time or opportunity for comments when you give the signal for that. Otherwise, I have two questions. Actually, there are two points. So I'd like to return to the parking. Ms. Goldbeck, you referred with respect to the two disabled stalls that this is meeting building code, but I do suggest that this needs another look, and of course, in consultation with other advisors and professionals in the field and within our district staff, of course. But I have never visited the seniors, current seniors center of the 55 during operational hours where both of the stalls were not used. And so I do wonder whether the building code is sufficient for the type of building that we're considering and its clientele. Secondly, just a point on senior strategy. I believe that what is captured in the, what is being voiced from the Senior Center Society in their memo on this topic is more broad. It's something more analogous to what we've done over the last year with the youth strategy, and would not at all be necessarily focused on facility utilization or operational strategies at all, but much broader in terms of housing, use of parks, and universal design, and different elements of the community, interactive transportation, and other realms. So just to make that point, that I think what we're talking about, or what the community representatives who've expressed themselves in this, is something more broad. And I do agree with Counselor Reese's suggestion that that is a separate item, if you wish, for us to consider ongoing. We have, after all, not had an active seniors advisory committee of council since, as I recall, 2012, 2013. And that was part of the background to the collaboration agreement. That was a mechanism that really filled a gap. We haven't had a committee of council for quite some time, specifically concerning seniors. Thank you.
Is there any other hands I missed? Okay, I do have a couple of questions. In some of the emails, there was talk about fundraising and capital contributions the seniors society had made to the Activity 55. And I'd just like to get an understanding of how we have taken that into consideration in terms of what we're planning here. And I think we've lost Ms. Goldbeck.
We will go and get her to come into the council chamber.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Ms. Goldbeck, we lost you there. Why don't we pause on that? If there are counselors that wanted to make comments before there's a motion, maybe take this opportunity? Okay. Counsel Reese.
Yeah, hopefully you can hear me. I'm sorry, because I'm hard-wired into my modem, so I'm not sure what the problem might be. But I was actually going to move through staff recommendation and speak to that, and others probably will do as well, and deal with it that way, if the chair wants to proceed in that direction.
I did have a couple of questions for staff, but...
I can hold up.
Yeah, sorry, I just, the Wi-Fi is a little weak tonight. My apologies, thanks for that. So I'm just in council chambers now. Counselor Penningill, do you mind repeating that question, please?
Sure, yeah, in some of the emails, some of the seniors have talked about financial contributions they've made to the current facility, and I'm just wondering how that's been considered in the various proposals.
Yeah, through the chair, that, certainly the fundraising from the seniors center society has been very valuable over the years. I'm not sure what you mean by considered in the various proposals. Certainly, there's been some contributions from the society. There's also been, you know, significant contributions from the district, and I think together between the parties, some viable programs have been offered. I, so I'm not quite sure what you mean.
Well, and I don't have a particular answer in mind, but presumably with some of the financial contributions, there was some expectation of some level of control, or program design, or longevity, or something. And I don't know if that was discussed or just assumed, or... So I'm just sort of wondering how we've tried to think about that as we've proposed different options.
Yeah, well, the fundraising that was done from the seniors center society, to my knowledge, didn't come with any expectations of, you know, time commitment, or sort of longevity of the utilization of those funds, or anything like that. The nature of fundraising is that it's done for a particular purpose, and then that purpose is funded by the funds that are raised. So I believe that has been achieved. It's been very valuable, and the expertise and the hours volunteered by the community members, I think, have paid off in benefits to the community. And I'm not aware of any constraints on the use of those resources going forward.
Okay, I'll leave that for now. I guess the only other question I had is, does this work if the Activity 55 doesn't become a lot more active, in terms of the amount of resources we're allocating? And I'm wondering, because there has been discussion about a lot more parking at the new site, and in that discussion, I'm wondering, is this a fundamentally challenged site of the Activity 55? So does that stay underused? Maybe the new site's really busy, but now we have still this underutilized site? And does that work in our overall plan?
Thank you. That is certainly something we are mindful of, that we have struggled to activate this space over the years. We are at a point with our capacity pressures right now in recreation, and with district facilities, and community facilities more generally, that it's not tolerable for us to have latent assets. So I would say this is a must-not-fail issue for us, that activating that space and taking advantage of that in order to defer capital investment in other areas is critical. We're very attuned to that, and have been developing recreation optimization planning to that, and with quite a lot of focus.
Thank you. So Counselor Reese, I think you wanted to propose something?
I'll move the staff recommendation and speak to it secondly.
Okay, and Counselor French?
I'll second it and speak to it also.
Okay, Counselor Reese?
Thank you. So I am supportive of this initiative to get into the West Winds. It first came to council's attention some time ago now. I thought this was a great opportunity, and it seemed to me to be a perfect fit. And I'm still of that opinion. I think there's obviously some detail to work out, and a lot of the emails that I've seen over the past couple of weeks have talked about different activities, and whether there's facilities for it, and so forth. And that's why I think the engagement process, it was quite important to get a space that was really as suitable as possible at a reasonable cost. And so I agree with staff, we don't want to go retrofitting something that's always more expensive. So I think it's important to engage it, it's important for the seniors to take part in the engagement, to give their thoughts.
Counselor Reese, I'm getting signals that we can't hear you. Can you move closer?
Can you move closer?
And I don't know why that might be, because there's nothing blocking my mic. I mean, I'm just sitting here in front of it like I always do, and I'm hardwired to my modem, so...
It is better, I think, when you're closer to the screen or presumably mic.
I thought I might have been overpowering it, actually, but maybe not. So in any event, I think this is an opportunity for us. And the MOU, as staff point out, is not binding. And it is very general in its terms. But I think it is an indication that we want to go forward, and I'm certainly aligned with that. I think the other thing we have to keep in mind is the 55 is not going anyplace. Will still be available for specialized programming, I would think, and special activities that might be suitable for, that might not work in another spot. So I think it's, both of them are additional assets and complement each other. The strategy, which is also important to the seniors, is certainly in my mind is a separate issue and it's broader and it's longer term and it covers a whole bunch of other things, or can. And there's a role for the district to play, and then there's other things that we just don't have jurisdiction over that would affect seniors. But I think that's something that staff can pursue separately. It will also require engagement over time. For me, it's on a different timeline and is something that we can just pursue over the next however long it might take. But anyway, I am supportive of this initiative, and so we vote in favor of this resolution.
Okay, Council French?
Thank you. And this is a matter for council. And it's more a matter for council than ever before because of the challenging relationship that I pointed to earlier between the Squamish Senior Center Society and the District of Squamish. This is as political as it is because we have not had a great communication with that key society. So that is all in the past, and we were elected to make tough decisions like this one. And now, more than ever, in light of the fact that it's challenging for us to build new facilities with limited budgets and limited access to capital. So cooperation, partnerships, and collaboration, working together, is really the theme moving forward. And I'll reiterate what Council Ray said. The 55 Activity Center isn't going anywhere. The specialized sprung floor in that facility remains and will continue to be available for use by seniors. The kitchen facility will remain, it will be used. And the specialized art facilities in the facility will remain and access will continue to be available for seniors. As we transition to creating a 55 Activity Center that is more active in conjunction with space being used at West Winds, I support this motion. Thank you.
Mayor Elliott.
I will support the motion. And I would hope that when it does come forward for a final decision, it will include the language around a notice period in the agreement. I think that will be important for me to see when this comes back for a vote. I think using our current assets to the best of our ability is critical. And making sure that seniors have a dedicated space is essential. And that we have capacity in our community space across the community for them for all ages. So it's unfortunate that so much misinformation was out in the community before we were able to bring this to the table for discussion. Because it certainly, you know, we've been getting letters about the intent to displace seniors and to turn it into a youth hub. And that's not what I see from this proposal at all, but rather to protect a seniors hub, bring it to seniors in the West Winds, and then still enable seniors to have programming and space for Brendan Park, at West Winds, at the 55, and potentially in other neighborhood hubs that we create. So to me, this is about creating more space and working with seniors across the community, not just this one board, to design that space at the West Winds. And I think going forward, we have to acknowledge that the governance now has to shift if this is approved. The 55 will likely get renamed. And so what is the role of this board that's worked so hard to advocate for seniors? How do we create an age-friendly community, which is a very broad type of plan? But certainly, I think it's one that we should look at funding at the district. I think probably its time has come because it looks more than just at facilities, but actually keeping seniors healthy and actively engaged in their community throughout their entire lifespan. So that's a much broader conversation, but I think we have to acknowledge that governance is shifting here somehow. And so I think broad-based engagement on the design of the West Winds will be important to make sure that the seniors in our community, whether they were involved at the 55 Activity Center or not, have a say in how this hub gets fitted out and how it's created and the programming that would be offered there and in other facilities from the district. So I appreciate staff looking at this opportunity and finding this creative way to reduce our capital expenditures, but still create dedicated space. And I'll look forward to this coming back to council for a final decision.
Thank you. Council Anderson.
Excuse me, Chair, I'm just muddling with a small device. So we are facing tough choices and we have given tough assignments to our staff. These arise from our real estate and facilities master plan and the challenges they present. I am concerned with one element of the present MOU, and that refers to the underguiding principles to the consultation and engagement section I'll cite it here, with consultation and input from seniors across Squamish. And I'm concerned that that may be given by the public and by the seniors community a kind of a political interpretation. And I do hope that will not, that that will be proven to be incorrect. So the collaboration agreement of 2015 was not specific to any facility, and therefore I think that it is still of interest to refer to. I have, on several occasions, being an old timer, observed the district overlooking past agreements and MOUs and this sort of thing. Yes, they are non-binding and they have their legal status or not, but we must, when we conclude an agreement like that one in 2015, be bargaining in good faith and be seen to be bargaining in good faith. The role of the seniors center society over the past couple of decades has been foundational, institutional. And I think it's beyond that they are good people with good intentions and knowledge. They have made extraordinary efforts and initiatives to realize what we have today. So I do expect and hope that the governance model that will be pursued will be considering where we've left off and where we may need to return to and rebuild. On the matter of, there's another statement in the report to council, bringing programming home to seniors. I think that needs to be qualified in that the buildings surrounding the present center are overwhelmingly inhabited by seniors. And that does include the Clock Tower Building. I have heard reference otherwise, but it is the case, that there's overwhelmingly seniors in that building and in the Eagle Grove facility not so far away. And I raise that because it's one of the topics that may be addressed in a more general senior strategy for the community. Where do seniors live? What can we anticipate about their movement and transit and transportation patterns, for example, and housing needs? So this is a more general question, but happily, we're all going to be in the same neighborhood. But that neighborhood, I just wanted to qualify the picture, is that some of the facilities that are nearby the present center are overwhelmingly inhabited by seniors, members of seniors community. I'll leave it at that. I'm happy to support this with those observations and concerns regarding engagement. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Stoner, and then Council Hereford.
Thank you, through the chair. I too will be supporting this motion. I think back to the election campaign, and I think one of the biggest things that I heard was that our recreation facilities were bursting at the seams. And then not much longer after the election campaign, we were sitting in council chambers and we got the real estate and facilities master plan that showed that we have 170-some-odd million dollar deficit in our infrastructure going forward and that all of our critical facilities were going to take up our capital budgets in the short to medium term. And that was a really big hill to then, or bar to set for our recreation staff, to come up with innovative and unique ways to start to address the bursting at the seams that we knew were happening in our recreation facilities. And so I too want to thank staff for exploring this opportunity and bring it to us and also bring some of the details in the presentation with regards to the wait lists that we're trying to manage, currently passing out 500 people per year, and that is increasing year over year. And we have a building that is currently operating at 20% of its current capacity. And I think that the narrative of having to match capacity with demand is one that is challenging, but we know we need to do. And so I think that this is a necessary step in looking at how we effectively manage the capacity that we have, both in budgets and in space, as well as the demand that we know we're seeing from our community. I also hear very loud and clear and want to thank the Squamish Senior Center Society Board, as well as all the others that we've received feedback from in the last few days, that this feels like a little bit of a displacement. And I want to reassure and hope that folks who have tuned in today and/or come back to listen to this conversation, that this is about creating more space and ensuring that we have dedicated space in the long run for seniors while trying to address that capacity crunch. So I feel satisfied with what I've heard today in terms of the opportunity for building out that space for it to be functional for seniors. And I hope staff have heard from our comments and our questions, the need to engage with that community and the seniors community to ensure that that's built out to the specs that that community expects in that new West Winds space. So I will leave my comments at that. But thank you to staff and for the community to engage in this and pursue this innovative and alternative solution to trying to find more space for all parties in our community. Thank you.
Council Hereford.
Thank you. I'll be supporting this motion. The current underutilization of that space is glaring in the face of our overcapacity of our other facilities. And I appreciate staff's creative solution to the issue as we find, as we maintain a space for seniors in our community and also have a net gain of rec space in our downtown that will also be available for the use of all groups in our community, including the seniors. So that 55 facility, as I'm sure it will evolve, but the facility itself is not going away, and the unique capacity is available there for specific programming will be maintained. I appreciate the neighborhood hub that this area can be for our downtown. I look forward to seeing it operating at whatever a healthy percentage of capacity is deemed to be. I do think we have more work to do, and I appreciate the mayor's term of the age-friendly community. I think there's some work to do overall in this regard, and this particular issue is highlighting, is bringing that to the surface. So I hope we find opportunities to continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll be honest, I think I'm not quite there yet on this MOU. And for me, the stumbling block is I don't have my head wrapped around the numbers, which I understand are supposed to be reasonable relative to the access. And so what I would like to see when this comes back at the special meeting is some more attention to ensuring some sort of access outside of, you know, we're going to put a lot into the design and so on, but making sure that that access goes beyond 2PM. Somehow, I think that needs to be addressed a little more. I do have a concern that this may sit empty or unused. And, you know, even if it's a commitment from West Winds to do their own sorts of seniors activities and programming, sort of separate from us, but I'm just really sensitive to that. I think one of the things that I would appreciate when this comes back to us, some of the numbers that look like our funding was relative to instructors and programming at the Adventure Center, nearly seven or eight times on admin and then another seven or eight times on facility costs. And the numbers went by quickly, so I may have misunderstood that, but just in the report that comes back to us, a bit of explanation on that would be appreciated. I do think somehow, you know, the seniors who did fundraising, there probably is some reasonable expectation that they were fundraising for stuff that they would have some sort of ongoing access to or that would count for something. And not everything, we do have incredible pressures. We have to work well as a community, and our community has changed. So we can't sort of stick forever to the way things were five years ago or 10 years ago. We have to adapt as a community. So I'm not sort of saying a decision was made 10 years ago and we can't adjust. I think we have to as a community. But I think somehow we have to, from my perspective, just acknowledge a little bit how we are sort of addressing that. And I am, you know, it's quite likely I will change my vote when it comes to us at the special. I am very sensitive because we are so constrained for space. We aren't going to have many other opportunities, and I don't want to lose it. The challenge for us, I think, is if we listen to some of the emails we have now and don't provide this space, the consequence is in three years, when seniors are completely out of space, we'll have to say, well, sorry, we had an option, it was turned down, and so now you're kind of stuck. Or we take some political heat now and do, you know, maybe what is the right thing for the future. And I guess I just put that out there. I'm hoping in the next week or two, before this comes back to us, there can be some more conversations and we can try and find a way collectively not to lose this opportunity. And just one final thing, it was raised to me, some of the current parking issues and a request that it be mentioned as we move forward, adjusting parking, adjusting uses, that we are paying careful attention to being good neighbors in terms of parking at the Activity 55. So I will leave it at that, and if there are no more hands, call the question. So all those in favor? Anyone opposed? And Council Penningill opposes.
Council, we are well behind, and I felt that was, just given all the emails, we needed to spend the time on that discussion, so I let it go over. But we don't have enough time to get through both of the next items before the LMLGA AGM. So I think our option is to either recess for the AGM and come back or cut one of the items. Mayor Elliott, can you, yes, appreciate your feedback.
The other option is that one person attends the AGM and the rest of us continue on.
So can we do a straw poll? Actually, maybe I'll just go one at a time. Mayor Elliott, do you have a preference?
I'm noticing it's your meeting, Council Penningill, but obviously the tourism impact study has people attending that are outside the District of Squamish. Their names are listed on the agenda. It is critical that we get to the PTE discussion. Finance needs that in order to prepare bylaws in advance of the deadline for that. So in my mind, the virtual LMLGA AGM is less of a priority than the business in front of us. So my preference is to continue, and if a member of council feels... So my preference is to continue, and if a member of council feels strongly that they want space in the LMLGA, as long as we can hold forum, we should continue.
Yeah, I'm seeing some nodding. Is there anyone opposed to that approach? Okay, let's move forward on that basis. So we will, is it acceptable to rearrange? Because we do have Tourism Squamish as a guest, does that make sense to change the items? Okay, so I will ask, I guess it's Ms. Weeks, to speak to us about the Tourism Impact Study.
We're just getting people sorted right now.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are you reading this off?
Yeah, it's actually, yes, it's actually myself. Good afternoon, Chair and Counsel, how are you today? I'm going to just see, do we have Tourism Squamish logged in?
We do not right now, we're just trying to get ahold of them.
Okay. It should be Courtney Dashbur that's promoted for the presentation?
Yeah, Courtney's not on yet.
Okay. I will quickly send an email.
I feel like I made things worse. I was looking at the time, and we're already past their start time, so I was hoping they'd be ready to go.
Okay, I think Louise Walker is now on the line, who's also participating. Sorry for the delay.
Hi, Chair and Counsel.
Hello, welcome.
Hi, sorry for the delay, I was busy watching you on my other laptop.
Maybe Louise, if you can keep your camera off, you seem to be breaking up.
Okay.
Thank you. Oh.
Oh, there's Courtney. Hi Courtney.
Hi there.
So Kate, can I, are you good to go now?
You're good to go, I'm just going to get the presentation up.
And I should say Ms. Mulligan, I apologize.
That's okay. I can't share content on my screen right now. So, oh, now I can. Okay. I take it everybody's able to see the presentation?
Yes, we're good.
Excellent. Okay. So thank you very much, Chair and Counsel. This is the Tourism Impact Study Dynamics and Opportunities presentation. There's been a slight change of plan. Originally Nicholas Slater was going to present with Courtney. I'm stepping in in her place. And so today, it's to approve a recommendation that Council approves the following resolution. That District of Squamish endorses the Tourism, the Squamish Tourism Impact Study dated January 2020, as presented to the Committee of the Whole dated September 29, 2020. Just to provide a little bit of background, this study was funded by a B.C. Rural Dividend Grant. It was part of a multi-year research project that was undertaken in partnership with Tourism Squamish and the Chamber of Commerce. The purpose, or sorry, the study was conducted by Crane Management, and the purpose of the study was to measure the overall economic impact of Squamish's tourism economy, to estimate direct total spending by visitors to Squamish for 2018, and provide a comparison to the 2008 estimate, which was the latest estimate at the time. It was also to review and analyze Squamish's tourism sector dynamics, including a number of tourism stakeholders which were interviewed to provide an idea around opportunities for future tourism development. The study also included an estimation of the number of visitors to the Squamish area, and provided direct, indirect, induced, and total GDP, employment, taxes, and wages of tourism, of the tourism sector in Squamish. And the study that was undertaken, when we originally presented during Committee of the Whole, excluded an overview of the top opportunities for tourism development that were an outcome of the work to interview stakeholders during the study. So we are going to touch on a summary of what was previously presented to council, which included the economic impact, recent trends and factors influencing growth in visitation, as well as industry dynamics. So we are going to be sharing, though, more in depth, what the top opportunities were uncovered through those stakeholder interviews. I will stress that this was a pre-COVID study, so it was reflecting a moment in time. And it was providing updated tourism economic data comparing 2008 with 2018 data. So in reference to COVID-19, the economic data now provides a baseline for tourism in Squamish to measure against future years. You'll also see that the top opportunities that are going to be presented today are going to be presented in the context of Destination British Columbia's Development, Destination Development Plan for the Cedar Sky Corridor. And again, keep in mind that both the Destination Development Plan, as well as this study, were conducted pre-COVID. So with that, I'm just going to hand over the presentation to Courtney. And Courtney, if you'd like to just let me know when I should advance slides, I will do so.
Great. I'm able to be heard?
Yeah.
Yep.
Do you have your devices on, Courtney? There's a really big echo. Can you mute one of your devices?
Okay. Just seeing if it's opening.
That's okay now.
That's okay. Thank you for that. So thanks, Kate. And just as some brief cast keeping, Leslie Weeks was just unable to attend today just due to a conflict with the Destination Marketing Association AGM, which just fell at the same time, so she does send her regrets. So just as Kate mentioned, I'll be just providing a brief refresher on some of the previously presented results at the Committee of the Whole meeting back in March. So I'll get straight into that. And just as a refresher, an estimated 615, 600 visitors came to Squamish in 2018, but either the day or an overnight visit, which represents a 290% increase in visitation rate compared to 2008, which was when the last time a similar study was conducted. So these 615,000-plus visitors had an estimated direct spend of 95.2 million in Squamish in 2018, which was a 277% increase in direct spend when compared to 2008. Next slide, please, Kate. So looking at some of the local economic impact figures. So in 2018, there were 788 direct jobs supported by tourism in Squamish, with 35.5 million in employment income or wages, 50.1 million in GDP, and 87.7 million created in economic output. The direct, indirect, and induced impacts of the Squamish tourism sector accounted for 79.2 million in GDP and 134.6 million in economic output at the provincial level. And the tourism sector in Squamish contributed 26.6 million in total tax revenues in 2018 across the three levels of government, of that contributing 2.1 million towards local government taxes. So that's just the numbers that we, or that were shared in March. Next slide, please. So the visitation and economic growth that we saw between that 2008 numbers and the 2018 from the study, as the study reported, can be attributed to several factors, including a healthy economy, increased global awareness, and new tourism infrastructure in Squamish, the opening of the Cedar Sky Gondola, better funding market efforts of Tourism Squamish, and this is particularly through increased municipal and regional district tax revenues, and an increased accommodation supply due to the growth in short-term rental accommodation. Next slide, please. So that is just, as I said, a brief, a quick, brief refresher of what was shared in March. So now we'll look at some of the top opportunities that were identified by Squamish tourism stakeholders as part of the study. And this was the section that wasn't presented in March. So as part of the study, a small group of tourism industry stakeholders were interviewed by the consultant to provide an understanding of current issues and opportunities facing Tourism Squamish, Squamish's tourism industry, excuse me, and potential areas for further development and investigation. So as you can see on the current slide, just to give some framework of those top opportunities before we go into those that the stakeholders identified, they have been aligned with Tourism Squamish's key strategic areas, which are the five sections you can see on the slide. And for context, Tourism Squamish's key strategic areas have been developed to align wherever possible with the Cedar Sky Destination Development Strategy, which was completed last year, which Kate mentioned previously. So I'll just quickly run through those five key themes. So Tourism Squamish's strategic areas focus on five key themes. The first being sustainable growth of overnight visitation. So attract overnight visitors by inspiring travelers through increased brand awareness. The second theme is stewardship and social license. So protect our natural assets and enable responsible tourism through visitor education, discretion, management, to encourage respect for our place and people, and to create strong social license and resident support. Three, theme three is destination and product development. So support efforts to improve tourism infrastructure and develop and enhance products and experiences that attract visitors year-round. Theme four is in-destination visit experience. So ensure Tourism Squamish and partners deliver on our brand promise and stay true to Squamish's values and passions. And finally, theme five is resiliency planning and partnerships. So build resiliency through collaboration and partnership. So next slide, please. So bringing that back to the study, as I mentioned, the stakeholders' top opportunities that were identified through the interviews were categorized to align with Tourism Squamish's key strategic themes, so that they can be considered as we move forward with our strategic planning and operations. So this is the actual stakeholder opportunities. So under the sustainable growth of overnight visitors theme, so the stakeholders identified that there was a perception that more visitors could be drawn from lower mainland communities, albeit that this is currently one of Squamish's key markets. Another opportunity was growing non-peak visitation through marketing efforts such as packaging. And then, under the stewardship and social license theme, stakeholders identified the protection of natural assets and land base to support tourism development. Next slide, please. Under the destination and product development theme, so stakeholders identified the need for more diversity in accommodation, and this could potentially include higher-end boutique and/or conference service-style accommodation to meet growing demand and to expand appeal to new markets. They also identified new product experiences to appeal to a broader audience and enable off-peak, mid-week, and weather-independent stays. And a more collaborative approach by the District of Squamish when working or engaging tourism sector-related organizations and enterprises. And finally, under the resilience, planning, and partnerships theme, employee housing is a key challenge and opportunity, linking back to that, you know, hiring can create that bottleneck for hiring and retention. In addition to these opportunities, there was also some stakeholder perceptions of suggested in, there could be suggested improvements to the further development of market, meetings and group business. However, it is sort of recognized at the moment, Squamish doesn't have the supporting infrastructure, and this could potentially be more of a long-term strategy. So again, just as Kate sort of did mention, these interviews did take place last year, in 2019, as part of this study, and it was conducted pre-COVID. So I now pass back over to Kate, just to talk about the next steps.
All right, thank you so much, Courtney. So working with partners, the District of Squamish will work towards recommendations that are related to destination development and management, workforce and housing, housing planning, and local jobs within tourism. So these recommendations will be based on Tourism Squamish's strategy and aligned with the Cedar Sky Corridor Destination Development Strategy. We'll consider these study findings as area of interest within the development and prioritization of future work plans related to tourism sector development. So the recommendation, again, is that District of Squamish endorses Squamish Tourism Impact Study dated January 2020, as presented to the Committee of the Whole, dated September 29, 2020. And that's it, we're happy to take some questions.
Thank you. Mayor Elliott?
Courtney said that, to fill in this last gap, that a small group of tourism-related folks were interviewed. Who was that?
It was a mixture of accommodation providers, so some of the traditional hotel operators, tourism attractions, food and beverage outlets, and the events, event producers. It was, yeah, it was basically, we put a call out through the, via the consultant, and those who wanted to participate did.
And how many would you say there were?
If I'm just looking at the report, the consultant spoke to 18.
And could you just elaborate on a more collaborative approach by the District of Squamish? There weren't any details on what that meant in the report. So it's put out there, in terms of destination and product development, no details on how we're supposed to do that better. So I'm wondering if you have any information about what was said in that conversation?
I'm just having a look at that section. I think it was, yeah, there is a, just a understanding that, you know, to achieve goals around sort of shared tourism infrastructure, just that, from, as I said, this was the stakeholder feedback and perspective, just that some of them felt that there had, there needs to be more of an engagement process on their behalf, so like businesses and enterprise that are involved in tourism industry.
But there are no specific recommendations?
Not at, as I said, that was some of the recorded feedback from the stakeholders. I wasn't, like, we, I wasn't present at those, so I don't know. so I don't know if it was discussed as to further, what that actually might look like from the stakeholders' perspective.
That would have been helpful.
A see ahead from Ms. Walker, maybe she can clarify that?
Thanks, Counselor. I think, I think this is something that we could go back and ask the consultant if he has any more information he could share. Given this was the feedback that he presented in the report, there's an opportunity to get more feedback.
Okay. And then under stewardship and social licence, I just wondered if there were any questions raised related to the climate impact of the tourism sector or reducing the greenhouse gas footprint of this sector as it looks to the future, or any of those types of questions aligned with our climate emergency?
In the report, there isn't mention of the, of sort of climate change actions, no, not in this report.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Stoner?
Thank you, through the chair. Thanks to everybody for the, for the presentation and the report. I was happy to see that one of the next steps in the recommendations was further work on the stable workforce, workforce housing component. And I just wanted to see if there was any update. I know that last year we had looked at applying for a grant under, I'm forgetting what the granting stream was, but then it then got pulled. That was going to start to try and see if we could kind of match some of the availability of rental stock on a shorter term with key partners, tourist operators, who might have kind of more short-term workforce housing needs on, on six or eight-month basis. And I'm just curious if those conversations, despite that grant funding falling through, if they've progressed at all with either ourselves or with our, with our partners on the call.
Through you, the chair, if I may. So the, the grant was through the B C Rule Dividend, and it was actually part of a larger affordable housing, part of the larger affordable housing strategy for the district, and it was to support the governance and as well those programs. And so that, that is on pause right now. And in terms of the work that the district is doing on affordable housing, I think that that update is coming to you or has come to you through the strategic plan as well as will be coming to you shortly in terms of what, what's ongoing. So we haven't actually made any inroads beyond that between partners around affordable housing since this, the, the initial grant that was put in, which was supported by Tourism Squamish and, and also the Squamish Chamber. So nothing's really been done there. Definitely, it was a highlight of the twenty nineteen study. It was definitely top of mind for a lot of tourism operators. And there was, I think, a desire at the time to look for opportunities for employee matching programs. I don't know, maybe also Louise, you might have something to add?
Go ahead, Louise.
Or maybe not. We might have lost her.
I'm still here.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think probably we have to, given everything that's happened over the last six months, we look at what the priorities need to be there.
Okay, thank you. I'll go to Counselor Anderson.
I guess I'll be making two general comments. First of all, in the theme of the availability and growth of local indigenous and heritage-focused amenities and attractions, citing from the report. I'd just like to make the comment on that, that we don't necessarily need to consider this to refer to Squamish Nation community businesses or ventures. I think that we should reflect that, we should reflect on the fact that all of us are involved in this, and I'm referring specifically to the Squamish Nation Heritage. I'll give two examples. The Haasun Marine Trail, or the Sea to Sky Marine Trail, which has been extended through Haasun, was an initiative which involves Squamish Nation participation, but it was not led by them, although one of its key features is new Squamish language place names for a variety of sites around the, the waters of Haasun. Another example is the Haasun Tours Programme of a few years ago with Squamish Marine Services, with Caplan University involved also. That has Squamish Nation do any participation, but it was a local business that led that venture, but it was entirely really focused on a tour of Squamish culture around Haasun. So that, I think that it's just that we shouldn't categorize too strongly this theme as being something that is, well, we should emphasize that it's something that is shared. We're all sharing in the delivery of the, of this experience, and that is something that any Squamish Nation community member, I would sure to acknowledge as well. Of course, it's great to see the new facilities and business ventures under Squamish Nation auspices, but we're all a part of this. The second comment I wanted to make, I'll just preface it by saying again, we had a previous presentation on the economic impact data, and I think this is just really a milestone report, this aspect of it. It's unprecedented assembly of data, very useful and really well done, the methodology presented along with it, and I just can't say enough about, about the achievement of that aspect of the report. The other component that we're being delivered today is the sector dynamic aspect, or this is another aspect we're dealing with today. I think there's some questions to pose here. The authors, the crane management, they acknowledged the limitations throughout the discussion of what they were up to and the limited number of interviews and so on. But I think there's a bigger context for us, and I'll come back to a question that arises from that. We have other reports and some that have been mentioned, such as the Sea to Sky Corridor Destination Development Strategy. They cover all of the themes of this report in more detail. And we have other sets of reports that do so as well. For the water-based tourism marine gateway, we have our marine action strategy. For transportation alternatives to the highway, we have a new SLRD background paper, which is really good. And for accommodation, we are addressing this today with our short-term rentals. So there's various other reports, and I should also add the arts, cultural and heritage strategy. So the general point I want to make is with all of these other things going on, treating these topics in, in fact, more detail, we should perhaps for next time, ask the question, what are our goals in doing a sector dynamic study? I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, but we should ask, in light of all of the other initiatives and reports available, what are our specific goals for doing a sector dynamic study? And, and, and outline this for our consultant. Otherwise, I understand, as Kate Mulligan has mentioned, that these recommendations will be considered for future work plans, and that's great. We've got a lot going on to, to place into those work plans. So that's just my general question for next time and for future similar sector dynamic studies, what are our specific goals, given that there's lots of other initiatives related? Thank you.
Ms. Mulligan?
If I may, through you, the chair. I think Louise also and Courtney may want to add to this. The intention of the sector dynamics was to provide top opportunities, not actual, not to make recommendations on tourism development. It was to uncover some opportunities as they were aligned to the D B C Destination Development Plan. So the original intent from what partners worked on in terms of the development of the questionnaire, the questionnaire that was used for the interviews, was to further understand how the D B C recommendations or themes for development reflected Squamish in particular. So that was sort of the premise in which the questions were asked. It was a small portion of the overall study. So I just wanted to, for Counsel to bear in mind that we're talking about top opportunities today. However, the bulk of the work that was done was very much focused on measurement of the sector itself as well as those dynamics which were presented at the previous meeting. So this was just a small component, almost like an add-on to the study, to be able to contextualize some of the results from the impact study and understand where maybe there were some underlying growth opportunities. I just wanted to reinforce that, and I'm not sure if Louise or Courtney have anything to add in respect to that.
Go to Ms. Walker first.
Yeah, without wanting to repeat what Kate said, I would just emphasize that this study was an impact study. It wasn't strategy or a document intention of creating tourism priorities. And that first part of the project, we should be very proud of. It's created some really great numbers that we have used time and time again over the last few months, that have been especially important. So I would just stress what Kate was saying, that this was an impact study and the dynamics were there to give context, not to give strategy.
Ms. Dashver, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I would just reiterate what Louise and Kate has mentioned, and that, you know, though the, those numbers now that the study was conducted last year and those numbers were based in two thousand and eighteen data, and that now gives us a baseline to understand recovery as tourism and other businesses, but the tourism industry recovers from COVID. So the value of that is huge as we look to recover over the next few years in, in measuring against that baseline that we took. So that, there's, there's huge value in that.
Thank you. Counselor Anderson, were you raising your hand for a follow-up?
Well, I will then just offer that maybe when we deal with these other initiatives, we should make, take better effort, I think we can, to, to use a tourism lens when we discuss rental accommodation, when we discuss arts, cultural and heritage strategy more than we do. We should do that in a more disciplined way. Maybe that's the point I'm trying to make. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else, Counsel? I'm not seeing any hands. We do have a resolution to endorse the the study to someone, someone interested in moving that. Counselor Anderson moves it. Someone like to second. Counselor Herbert seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. It's very impressive what this little, little sector is doing here in Squamish. It's it's incredible. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Counsel, just realizing in my focus on the clock, I forgot to think about breaks or anything. We're already into the, the AGM, and we still have another, hopefully not a huge item, but another item. So why don't we take until two forty for a quick break and then come back? So that's ten minutes. Oh, sorry, Mayor Elliott?
You said two forty, and it's two thirty-nine, which should give us one minute.
I apologize, two fifty. Thank you. Two fifty. We'll come back. And we're back, everyone. Welcome back, and it's hopefully our last discussion of the day or before the evening. We do have a public hearing tonight. We are on to the permissive tax exemptions. I understand a few counselors are in conflict. So what I will do is ask people to declare their conflict, and then if we can keep our discussion general and avoid those topics, we'll have that discussion as a group, and at the end we'll shuffle people on and offline, sort of one at a time as we need to. So Counselor Race, I saw your hand. And we can't hear you, Counselor Race. It looks like you're muted.
Sorry, for some reason, my screen changed on me, and there was no icon to click. Yeah, I'm, I have a conflict on the issue with the golf course, tax exemption. I'm a member of the squash club, and they are part of the same taxpaying entity, so would be impacted financially, one way or another, by a decision on that.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Anderson?
Chair, I am in conflict as well on this Squamish Valley Golf and Country Club matter, as I am part of their subsidiary group, the Curling Club, and would be impacted by member dues, that sort of thing.
And Mayor Elliott?
Thank you. While it's not being recommended for a P T E, my spouse is on the board of the Monastery School, and so if that conversation comes up, I will recuse myself.
Okay, thank you. So if, maybe if someone decides they would like to start talking about that, maybe just flag that, flag that, otherwise we will avoid that topic if possible. So I will pass, and thank you, everyone. I will pass it off to Ms. Classon now to speak just about the permissive tax exemptions.
Good afternoon, Mayor and, or Chair and Counsel. Can you hear me? Okay, good. Good. My name is Linda Clausen, and I'm the Manager of Financial Operations. And today we're going to go through, hopefully, a shorter presentation, the, the permissive tax exemptions. As always, we think they're going to be simple, and some of them are a little bit more complicated that we'll review together. I will now put up a presentation. There we go. Are you able to see the presentation?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thanks so much. So for the agenda today, we'll go through some guiding principles and evaluation questions that counsel may consider. We'll go through the authority that is provided to counsel to grant a permissive tax exemption. And today we have a group of permissive tax exemptions that are five years. One group that's one year and one group that's two years, and also we'll just discuss some of the non-eligible permissive tax exemptions. The purpose of this report is for staff to receive comments and directions from counsel on these draft bylaws prior to moving forward with the advertising and bringing the permissive tax exemption bylaws to the regular council meeting. Before we move forward right into each of the permissive tax exemptions, we would like to talk a little bit about the guiding principles, evaluation, questions you may have, and authority to grant the P T E. So on the guiding principles, counsel may consider that all the exempt, the permissive tax exemptions exempt all agency tax for the bylaw period. The legislation prevents us from providing partial year permissive tax exemptions. If a land is sold during that year, the permissive tax exemption carries on for the full year. Counsel grants a permissive tax exemption. When they do that, the burden shifts to the remaining property tax rolls. And something to consider is that counsel may not provide assistance to business. There are some properties that are owned by for-profit businesses and leased by nonprofits. The way that B C Assessment interprets the legislation is that the benefit would go to the business and not to the nonprofit. And it is generally a good practice to keep your permissive tax exemption list short. However, if counsel may choose to provide a, or direct the applicant to the community enhancement grant program if they're not eligible for the P T E or they would like more information. Some evaluation questions that counsel may consider when reviewing each of these permissive tax exemptions. I'm not going to go through each one of these, however, I want to just highlight a few of them. For example, when you're looking at the permissive tax exemptions, you may want to evaluate how broad and breadth the significance of the community, so how many people are going to be impacted by the services that this nonprofit may provide. Also, it may, we typically, it's not good practice to provide a permissive tax exemption to nonprofits that are competing with the private sector. And if this is a new applicant, counsel may want to consider if it's setting a new precedent. The authority for counsel to provide a permissive tax exemption is in the community charter under section two twenty-four. The lands must be owned by a charitable organization. And in, in this cycle of permissive tax exemptions, we are going to be looking at some churches. And typically churches have a statutory exemption, so the building, the improvement and the, the land that it sits on. on are already statutorily exempt. However, in this process, in the permissive tax exemption process, we provide if counsel chooses to provide the additional land, and that sometimes is a parking lot, or it is the landscaping or parking lot or additional buildings around that that church. Generally, according to the community charter, we can't provide a permissive tax exemption that is greater than 10 years. However, for the District of Squamish, we provide five years is the longest term that we provide a permissive tax exemption. We're required, the district is required by the community charter to provide notice to the public. We are currently looking to provide notice for advertising next week and the week after. The permissive tax exemption process begins in July and we have to adopt all the bylaws and file the bylaws with BCAA by October 31st. Sometimes we have properties that are partially eligible for the permissive tax exemption because a portion of the property may be used for a for-profit adventure. And we could draft a conditional bylaw if it's necessary. So moving forward, we're now going into the going into the applicants that we have received. We have received about 16 applicants this year. On the first this first set of applicants, this is for a five-year permissive tax exemption. We have chosen five years because historically that's what we've done. Counsel may choose to reduce that if they would like. And these are the churches that have provided us with their application and the value, the estimated value of that permissive tax exemption. At this time, this these are pretty routine. And at this time, does counsel want to discuss or have questions with any of these applicants?
Counselor Race?
Thank you. Is the United Church not applying or are they in the middle of a five-year term?
The United Church is inside a building at this point.
Oh, owned by somebody else?
Well, they own their their strata piece.
Well, I see. So that becomes exempt by section 220?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So Ms. Clausen, can you just clarify? So we can't give an exemption for part of a year. We can, if there's a mix of private, not-for-profit, we can give some portion of something. Like, does that mean we could say we will give you a 50% permissive tax exemption based on the fact that it's half-used for business? Or do we have to sort of split it up by physical structure somehow?
Typically, we provide it based on some measurement of something. When we go look at the Squamish Valley Golf Course, the Squamish Valley Golf Course has some has a pub and has a store and has a retail portion.
I just want to be careful what examples. Yeah, just want to be careful what examples we're using before people exit.
Yeah.
Okay, I will leave it there for now. If you want to proceed.
Okay. So now I'm I'm moving to the two-year applicants. We have the BCL Society for Children. They are a registered charity operating a summer camp for individuals with diverse abilities. This is a routine applicant and some of you may remember that they came they also applied last year and they were in some financial difficulty. They were looking to to change their programming and now they've decided to change their programming and run specialized programming for individuals with diverse abilities, still running the camp as well as running day camps for all children in Squamish. Last year, they received a one-year permissive tax exemption. Staff is recommending a two-year permissive tax exemption to align them with all the other nonprofit cycles. We also received a new a new applicant, the SPCA. They're they used to work out of our property and now they have their own. They own the property that they're on now. The organization has worked for some time in Squamish and previously leased properties from DOS. And I'm also recommending or staff is recommending a two-year exemption for this property on the same cycle as other nonprofit organizations. Does counsel have any questions about these two-year applicants?
Counselor Race?
Thank you. My only question is with respect to the first one, the BCL Society. So is a portion of their property being used for profit? Is that would that count as a profitable business, much like other examples in the community? Or is it entirely of a charitable nature?
When we ask they're entirely a charitable nature, I don't when we've asked them, that's what they've responded with.
That they are?
Yes.
I know the society would be, I'm sure. But it's the activity that the society is carrying out. Does it matter what a charity does? As long as they're a camp, for example, for kids. That's great. But is it is it profit-making? Is it sort of providing a source of funding for them? Is that the kind of thing that we would sometimes track?
If if the BCL Society were to rent out a portion of their property to a private enterprise, retail store, that kind of thing, I would think then we would make the portion of it permissive.
Oh, I get it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Ms. Clausen, just following up on that, if if they had hosted a few weddings with the mind that it's a fundraising, would that still fall under the the not-for-profit legitimate uses?
I would think so. The churches all have weddings in their in their buildings as well. I'm not sure that would be considered for-profit activity.
Okay, thank you. Please continue.
All right. So before I go to the next slide, on my next slide are the one-year applicants. In the one-year applicants, we will be talking about the Squamish Helping Hands, the Squamish Senior Citizens Home, and the Squamish Valley Golf and Country Club. I will talk about the first two and then I'll pause and those and then we'll continue with the Squamish Valley Golf and Country Club.
Okay, is there a way to structure this so any voting we can do can happen at the same time while people are offline? So we're not going on and offline twice, the same people?
Perhaps. Would you like to?
I'm just wondering if 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 there's a way just to yeah, structure the discussion so that, you know, the voting and the description of the the individual items can be pulled off separately. So so maybe the golf club and the things where people declared conflict, let's not talk about them at all until we're ready to have a vote and we can have any discussion and a vote all at once on those items.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. So in the slide, we're recommending a one-year permissive tax exemption. For the top two items, applicants, those are applicants that are in construction, partially. So the Squamish Helping Hand Society, they also lease land from the District of Squamish, and they're also building land under one roof, or they're also in construction under one roof. They've provided us with two applicants, applications. And staff is recommending that we provide a permissive tax exemption for both locations at this time. The reason being is it is not clear at this time because the construction is not complete, who owns what parcels, parcels, if it is a strata, and it's not clear how we would break that up in our property tax modules or in land titles. So we are recommending or staff is recommending that we move forward with a one-year permissive tax exemption to until we clarify the legal ownership of under one roof. Also, with the Squamish Senior Citizen Society, they have two properties. The building and the current building that they're in and the and the land or the footprint land, it gets a statutory exemption. However, the land surrounding that building and the landscaping and the in-construction building is what this permissive tax exemption is requesting. The reason that the current land or the current older building receives a permissive tax exemption is that it was built pre-1974. And when their new building is complete, we will have to review that. They will likely not receive a statutory exemption at that time. So I'm now moving on to those that are not eligible.
Counselor Race?
Thank you. If we can just go back to that with the senior citizens home. So the new building is under construction. When you say it won't qualify for the statutory exemption, it would be eligible to apply for a permissive exemption?
Yes.
Okay. We'll just wait to see how that shakes out.
Yeah.
Okay. And then I think, Chair, are we going to vote on the ones we've already discussed?
I I think we'll come back at the end, do the ones where people aren't in conflict. And I just want to check in with Ms. Arthur's. I'm a little bit uncomfortable with some of the all the detail on the screens. Are we okay with that, Counselor Race?
Well, I think so because it's just public information. So we're a member of the public.
Okay, okay.
Agreed.
If I might, I've received two calls just when we were on the break from staff. So my understanding is that we have to actually get out of the meeting. We can't get put into a waiting room. And then we'll be phoned and come back in. So what I was suggesting is we have all the discussion and the voting on the ones that we are not in conflict on. And then I think you were indicating we have discussion and voting on the ones we are in conflict on and we'd check out for that.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. I'm not sure that's the way staff was about to.
Yeah. All right.
Please proceed, Ms. Clausen.
Okay. So the next on this slide, we're taught we received two applications, one from the COVID testing center, applied for the PTE. However, this 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 property is held privately and does not qualify for the permissive tax exemption. And I'm going to move forward with other applications that we have received. We received an application from the Sea to Sky Forest Society. They already have a permissive tax exemption, so they do not need to apply again. And I also wanted to address that we also received the Sea to Sky Community Services application for their housing, the Center Point Housing, Castle Rock, and Riverstones. And I just wanted to address this a little bit. Staff has researched the buildings and the permissive tax exemption policy framework that aligns with the Affordable Housing Strategy Action Plan is underway. Through our initial review of the unit ownership and the funding models, staff has determined that they are complex and unique to each of the units, buildings, and organization. As well, the potential for future financial impacts may be significant as more units are coming online. So in light of this, staff continues to work through a potential solution for counsel to review and to ensure a robust and well-sought-through solution to affordable housing permissive tax exemptions. When we looked at other municipal permissive tax exemption policy, they're not necessarily addressing affordable housing PTEs in their PTE policy. So we're looking at how we can address a framework that will work for counsel and and understanding that the future financial impacts could be significant. And our next step is to draft and amend bylaws and bring the advertising of these bylaws next week. We'll bring the bylaws back to counsel on the 13th for final adoption on the 27th of October and submit the bylaws to BCA assessment by October 31st. The value of the total value of those permissive tax exemptions that we spoke about today was about $123,000. Compared to last year, they were about $250,000. Any questions?
So just actually, before we go to questions, we have one resolution, which is to you bring forward the PTE bylaws as a whole. It doesn't call out or ask us to vote on specific ones. Are we you're wanting our feedback on those and then ask for this resolution to be moved?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Race? And you're on mute.
I'm trying to pick up my sound today. I'll move that we advertise and bring forward the 2021 permissive tax exemption bylaws that we have already discussed. So staff will probably have to list those in the minutes or in the resolution.
So the ones?
The ones recommended by staff.
Okay.
Have been discussed.
Would you like me to list those?
Not necessarily. I'd like to give it to whoever's taking minutes.
Yeah, all right.
Is there a seconder on that? Mayor Elliott seconds. Any discussion? I'll just say briefly, I will be supporting this, the the idea of a church. I went down a rabbit hole of trying to figure out what a what a church is and so on. And I don't see an immediate red flag with with the the items before us, but I do start to wonder about advantaging religions that maybe don't have a physical structure. And for the future, I think I would like to see some sort of policy that considered maybe the the sorts of social programs and that sort of programming as as the decision point rather than rather not it's a church. But I think that's a decision for a future future day and a discussion for a future day. I just wanted to to raise that. So if there's no more discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. So why don't we do the the golf club now if people want to exit? Counselor Race?
Just this is the last thing, I think. Excuse me, the last thing on the agenda. So if I check out, do I have to come back in?
I just want to make sure we have enough quorum. We'll have three people. If all three of you leave and don't come back. Sorry, Mayor Elliott?
I'm not leaving unless someone raises the Montessori school. Otherwise, we're not voting on that. So if no one brings it up, I am staying.
Okay. And so then then we would have quorum and you wouldn't have to come back.
Okay, so I'll just I'll just check out and see you at the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. And Counselor Anderson?
Do the same, please, Chair. I'll check out at this time.
All right, thank you. Okay, so Ms. Clausen, sorry about this. Mayor Elliott, did you? No. Ms. Clausen?
Do you want me to move the remaining one for the Squamish Valley Golf and Country Club?
Yeah, I wasn't sure if we were going to have a bit of an introduction first or we were going straight to a vote. I'm fine if you would like to move it.
Unless counselors have questions.
I'm not seeing anything.
I'll move it.
Okay, is there a second there? Counselor Herford, any discussion? Not hearing any. I'll call a question. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? That carries. So I guess we actually do need a final motion that, oh, sorry, that was, that staff bring it forward. Just for clear. Okay, can I have a motion to terminate? Counselor Herford, second. Counselor French, all those in favor? Any discussion? Seeing none, we're done. It's approved.